Alderman Hook.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Ross.
Here.
Mayor, we have a forum.
Okay, approval agenda?
Motion approved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay, old business, Bill number thirty-nine eighty-three, second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a three-party payment agreement with Missouri Department of Natural Resources and Conferent Engineering, Foreign Engineering Services Report.
Motion approved.
Second.
Hey, bye. Should we call?
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Couch.
Yes.
Alderwoman Codwell.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero nos, one absent, bill number thirty-nine eighty-three now becomes ordinance thirty-nine twenty-three.
Okay, thank you. Anything else while we're in an open meeting? If not, motion to adjourn, Mr. Couch. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, we'll go right into the work session. Martin, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, before we start talking about the individual budgets, I need to inform you of some recent developments as it relates to health insurance. To our great surprise, Pam was able to negotiate with the health insurance company. We have the possibility, a number of possibilities. In your budget, and it's not found in any single place, but there, we projected a ten percent increase in the health insurance cost, which is about twenty-six thousand dollars. Keep that figure in mind. We were presented with a number of plans, some of which kind of kept us at the same level, but several of which produced significant savings without substantially diminishing benefits. Some deductibles, individual and family deductibles would go up. But one plan, and this is United Healthcare's plan, has an eighteen percent reduction in our healthcare cost. So if you take out that twenty-six thousand dollars that we were projecting we might need, and you add an eighteen percent reduction, again, without substantially changing our healthcare coverage, we end up with seventy-four thousand dollars of available resources that we didn't otherwise anticipate having. Now, you can go to some separate plans, which again, increased deductibles a little bit, and both family and individual, but the most, one would give us a twenty-three percent reduction, another one would be twenty-one percent. Yes, sir.
Did I hear you? What did you say the reduction was?
From eighteen to twenty-three percent.
No, but what was the figure? Seventy-four?
Seventy-four thousand.
Well, one of them, seventy-four thousand dollars.
But what were we paying if it's seventy-four thousand?
We were paying two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand four-hundred-and-four dollars.
It would probably be a two percent increase.
We had projected that that would go up, and so we had two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars figured in our budget approximately. And so that twenty-six thousand dollars now gets, is available to spend somewhere else. In addition to that, we can choose among programs that will further reduce our health insurance cost. Again, changing the benefits to the employees, but it goes, it's basically a change in deductible. One program changes the individual deductible by increasing it five hundred dollars, and the family a thousand. Another increases the individual deductible by a thousand dollars, and the family by two thousand dollars. That thousand and two thousand is the one that produces the most savings, obviously, because it's the greatest change in the individual deductible. But, and we'll talk in more detail about it, because other things that, you know, we're told is, we're one, Laitnan, we are one of two companies or policies that Laitnan writes where the employer pays all of the spouse or family coverage.
We should be proud of that.
Yeah? Perhaps we should. But that's another potential cost savings if you choose to investigate it. The, so, basically, the insurance savings that we can realize kind of get us to where we're, you know, the ninety thousand that we're going to lose from the TIF revenues, we're kind of back to square one. We're not in the hole if we can realize those insurance savings. And that would put our projected cash carryover, without doing anything, around two-hundred thousand dollars. It is in that context that we can now look at the budgets. And discussions I've had with several of the Aldermen, well, that's a great relief. It doesn't change the long-term kind of prognosis.
What's a great relief?
Having...
I never had a conversation with you, and if we're going to just try to find cost reductions in our employees' pockets, I don't like it.
Okay.
I mean, that's, we've had no discussion about this, first I've heard of it's now, and you've got this number plugged in?
Well, it's just a calculation, I haven't booked anything yet.
Yeah.
I'm just telling you it's available.
Yeah, I'd like to get a lot more, I'd like to get some feedback from our city employees, see how they feel about it. I know how I feel about it in my job. I'm nearly as excited as you are.
If we don't change anything, what's the reduction? Or is there one?
We don't, should we keep our current plan? It increases two-point-nine percent?
Ten.
Or ten percent? With no change in the plan. But we can keep the same, essentially the same level of benefit, changing the insurance companies and realize approximately the same annual cost. Anthem was the least competitive company.
An increase of a thousand or two thousand dollars in a family's deductible can be critical if there's medical issues, I mean...
But on the same side, I've done it was, play, you could play the odds, and they're mostly in your favor, that you could, the city could actually absorb the amount of savings that you could save, and you pick up that deductible out-of-pocket expense for the employee could, will more than likely far outweigh, unless everybody, unless you had a ton of people take advantage of it, would far outweigh the savings or the, what that deductible would be. It usually works out, I don't know what the percentage of that is, but it is a very high percentage that it almost always works out, that you save money by, even if you have to pick up the extra five hundred dollars yourself. Usually that savings, and if we're talking that kind of money just for the deductible, you're probably not going to spend seventy-four thousand dollars in out-of-pocket deductible.
I mean, I, this is a, that is a huge conversation to have. Like, exactly like you said, you know, it may make economic sense to do that and to pay the employee that difference in their deductible. But it's, anytime you start talking, you've been doing, you know how hard it is to figure out health insurance options and policies.
No, admittedly, it's confusing and difficult to figure out.
And what our options are, and working with a local company like Lakeland, or working with somebody else, and all those options that we've discussed in the past. It's, that's a really big issue that's going, needs its own focus before we, I mean, before we make a decision on.
I don't disagree with that. At the last meeting, however, and the conclusion was, we were going to meet tonight to discuss how we can reduce the level of services we're providing to the citizens of St. Genevieve. With the, and the only meaningful reductions, you know, aren't in, as you said, papers and pencils. And so, you know, I kind of went, well, if it's a cost, if it's a decision between adjusting benefits and keeping, people keeping their jobs, don't you err on the benefit side?
If that was the discussion, and it's not, I've heard no one propose that there's any reduction in the staff. Not realistically, that would be different. But I think that Mayor Grimmager has made the best point that financially, this may make good sense for the city, but just to say it that, okay, we're going to fix a street by reducing our employees' healthcare, that's terrible, that's a terrible thing to say. And I don't think that you said that, but I think that people will hear it like that, if we're not cautious.
But on the other hand, Mr. Couch, I would like for you to go around and talk to some of the businesses, what they're doing with their healthcare. And you're going to find out they're cutting it drastically, from Citizens Electric on down.
Well, John, that's not apples to apples.
No, but we got to wake up and realize we're in the twentieth century, we ain't in the sixties anymore. We got to start cutting where we, and I don't say we have to, but we may have to.
John, my employer pays a hundred percent of my healthcare.
Well, you better be proud of it.
I'm ecstatic. I'm ecstatic.
Well, that's just unheard of now.
I understand that.
And you're a lucky person to have it.
Tomorrow, you might lose part of it. They may cut it, you don't know. There's no, the only guarantee you're going to have that we're all going to die soon.
My wife and I are on a group plan through school, and our deductible is three thousand dollars, that's our deductible. Plus, our monthly premium is nine-hundred-and-nine dollars.
Well, Tom, I don't think you said any more, though, than we need to have the discussion that we're just starting right now. So, I think that's all, all that you really said.
And we need to have the proposals, either a company rep or somebody that can explain them in detail with confidence, so we can evaluate the proposals.
I think this, Martin was just bringing this out front.
Right.
Right, Martin, saying this may be one possibility to do this way.
Yes. And that, I mean, the ultimate decision is not mine.
Right.
It's yours. But the, try and provide pay and benefits that make the city to the best extent possible competitive, so we can attract quality employees and keep them. Every time that I've talked to anybody about insurance, it's kind of looked at as being one of the things that we're doing that is extraordinary based on other employers in the area. But it's kind of historically what government does, because we don't always pay as well. The hourly wages aren't as competitive, and so the benefits, both with vacation, sick pay, and insurance, have been kind of the compensation for that. Whether we, you, can continue to do that is the question. And last year, I could not have said to you, you could realize these savings by adjusting our deductibles on insurance, because frankly, they weren't there. And to some extent, that has to do with the Affordable Care Act, because employees can only get rated on age, smoking, and location, where they live. So any health considerations that were jacking up premiums last year are no longer calculated into the formulas. We are beneficiaries of that, because our rates are either going to be stabilized or can reduce, depending on how we choose to act. The, kind of, the message I heard at the meeting was, we want to try and find ten percent, a hundred and, which for our budget would be a hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars. And I don't know where you're going to get it except for things like this. That's what we're going to talk about tonight. So, Mick, let's talk about your budget. Page fifteen, sixteen. When we first looked at the budget, there were, basically said, just let me continue to operate at the level I was operating last year. There's nothing in here that represents an increase in any of the things that you were doing. So we really didn't spend a lot of time talking about it. However, the tourism budget was essentially the same, and we've asked them to consider things that can be done to help us get to that goal of reducing our expenditures out of the general operating fund. Is there anywhere in here that you could identify that would help us in that effort?
Well, I guess maybe I need to be the first to say nothing that's obvious. If you can look at my history, or history on page sixteen, obviously, if we're not needing to spend those funds during the year, we're not spending them. We're not, we don't put on a rush to spend our entire budget at the end of the year. And I had to significantly adjust a lot of my line items to be able to cover increases in telephone service, natural gas, electric, and equipment repair, you know, those sort of things. Vehicle insurance is going up on us, and those sort of things. So we have had basically a similar budget for the past, well, as far as eleven, and I think even ten, my, our budget was right about a hundred thousand and some change. So I don't know where it would be. Again, if we're told to reduce, we'll do whatever we have to do in those parameters. We significantly reduced our education and training budget, with the understanding that we've had several position changes in our volunteer firefighters. So today, we are looking for seven to ten new firefighters, we have that many positions potentially available. That creates a significant training challenge for us. And if you notice on page sixteen in the comparable, like for rural fire, we put six thousand dollars in there in the education and training, for the fact that we potentially may use that. Now, I put it there because what I'm talking about is the fact that if we get that many new firefighters, we want to want to do a firefighter one and two training program. And that is about, that six thousand dollars plus even the two thousand dollars I have in my current budget. We don't know that we would get that done in this next fiscal year. It quite possibly could start in late two-fifteen, which would be next budget, or two-sixteen possibly. So we are currently in the, in the mode of looking for those firefighters. We are going to put two new firefighters on this next Wednesday. And hopefully, we're going to be able to put five more on before the first of the year. And that will put a significant strain on our education of those firefighters, because we have to get them to the point where they're safe to fight fire before they can do any substantial interior work. So where to cut? We haven't, we have had the same budget in this particular criteria since two thousand and eleven. I don't know where it would be. So I have to leave it up, I'd have to leave it at that.
How about travel, lodging, conferences?
If you don't want anybody to go to external training outside?
Because we're pretty much zeroing that out for every other department. What is it, what, if we, if we did that, what would you not go to?
Well, there's two, there's only two external conferences we go to. One is the State Conference, or Winter Fire School in February. We send four people to that, and then there is a conference in Indianapolis, the Fire Park Instructors Conference, and we usually send four people to that, and that's the only two outside trainings we do. We try to send, if we have an individual that comes up and says, I'd like to go to this training, we'd like to try to fund that. So...
Line five thousand and six, why is there such a significant increase in workers' comp insurance cost? Or is that a, what does that mean? Workers' compensation? Is that an insurance premium, or is that...
Insurance premium, and it comes from, you know, from the workers' comp insurer.
We already know that that's what's...
We got our notice on where it reaches. And frankly, it's not a reflection of our claims experience, because we've got good claims experience, it's just what the policies are overall.
Martin? I probably asked this before, but, you know, if you look at the budget in, back in twenty thirteen, it was on page sixteen, total expenditures eighty-eight thousand. We projected a hundred and nine, we're up to eighty-one thousand for ten months. Is it going to increase like twenty-nine thousand dollars to meet our projected budget for two thousand and fourteen? Or is there going to be savings there on page sixteen on expenditures?
So the next two months?
Turn here?
Yeah.
Right, you know, we, we, the adopted budget for this year is a one oh nine, and right now it's eighty-one. Do we expect the twenty-nine, like the twenty-eight thousand?
No, 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 that's what I said, if you can look at the history that we have there.
Right, it's been eighty-eight, ninety-seven.
It's been, by our venture, our budgets were over a hundred thousand in eleven, twelve, and thirteen. And you can see there that we did not, we did not use that. So that's what I'm saying. If we're not running to spend a hundred and nine thousand, if we don't need it, we're not going to spend a hundred and nine thousand.
And I applaud you for that, because you come in under your budget, but then we budget the same amount again. Do we expect them to spend a hundred and nine, or is it going to come in lower?
Well, the way things are going around now, Mick, if you continue to, I don't know what's coming up in the next two months, but for the final two months, if you put another twenty percent on there, you've only got ninety-seven thousand that you're spending this year. Is that going to come in about right?
That would be my guess.
Okay, yeah, but I think...
But to say, to say what those are, I mean, you know...
Well, based on past performance, you have...
Yeah, I don't know that I would expect, like I say, we're not...
I mean, you could trim that, ten percent, probably still have some money left over.
The number is, you know, a function of... If you look at the line items down to twenty fifteen, look at the ones that increased over twenty fourteen, you'll see kind of what accounts for the difference. As an example, telephone was kicked up sixteen hundred dollars. Because he's already over, I mean, so they're, the projected for telephone.
You look at everything else, it comes up.
But some of the things are under it.
Right. I'm just saying, like, is this really a good proposed number? Or should we base it on twenty thirteen, and eighty-eight thousand?
You're eighty-one already right now.
Why? So I don't know, two months, like, I don't know what's being spent in two months, but...
There's some things here.
You could cut ten thousand off of that.
I, I, what do you... Look here, and where are we going to cut ten thousand? You know, hopefully, we'll come in less next year, like we did this year, the way it looks. But if you're going to come here and cut ten thousand dollars out of here, Teddy, what are you going to cut it out of?
Well, that's, that's what I'm, what I'm saying. I had to significantly rearrange things to take care of what we perceive the increases are going to be this year. So I don't know where you're going to find ten thousand. But again, next year, if I, if we manage our budget like we have been doing in the past, there just very well may be ten thousand.
Nick, would we cut out the travel lodges? Is that possible?
Well, you're going to get two thousand dollars there.
You got four thousand after next year?
It's not ten. Yeah, I know, yeah, right.
Martin, are we going to definitely carry new trucks?
Our property, twenty-five hundred, I think, is going to carry.
I don't like the idea of cutting education and training, which I believe, from what he's saying, the travel conferences go into. We have volunteer firefighters that need to be trained properly. So I'm against cutting their training budget.
I'm not against you there, I'm just saying, if there's one thing that we would trust that would be it, because there's nothing else near you to cut.
I know.
Not another thing.
The expenses that he can't do anything about are increasing. Gas, telephone, utilities, insurance.
It's out of our hands, there's nothing we can do with that.
Right, there's nothing we can do about that.
Mick, why telephones go up so much?
I don't, I don't know. As a matter of fact, I'm trying today to, and if any of you have been experiencing problems with AT&amp;T, and I've talked to some of my folks, I've been on, I was on the phone one hour, a whole day, or one day, trying to get some answers. And another hour, another day, and what I understand was the fact that if we changed to U-verse for our internet service, that we could go to something like from forty-nine dollars down to thirty-nine dollars. So I am currently doing that, but that's just small units. Why is it? I don't know.
Did you, Big River visit you, and they were, Big River Telephone, did you talk to them?
I have not talked to them, and I have not talked to Charter, and you know that when they start talking, that technical stuff gets over that head so far. I really am looking for my city administrator to guide me on that part.
Okay.
But I don't think AT&amp;T even offers U-verse down here right now.
Internet service they do.
Accidentally, they do.
Internet business.
Put it in yesterday here, so...
All right.
Yeah, for some reason, like at my house and at my business, we went to U-verse, which is a faster service, and it costs us less money per month, I don't know how, but, okay.
And that's what we were experiencing some difficulty, and then they told us that. My understanding, U-verse was going to be fiber optic, and when the serviceman gets here today, I'm asking him, so do we really have fiber optic? He says, no.
Yeah.
But we're going to go to U-verse, save some money, and we're still on a copper line, I don't get it.
The U-verse, we don't have the phone part of the U-verse in St. Genevieve yet, that's...
We haven't signed a contract. We haven't signed a contract with them.
No, no, no. It's just a reduction in the cost for better service, like Beth said. I don't get that part either.
Yeah. I'm gonna get Big River in here. We switched at the office. Our service is as good or better than it was before.
And be more than that.
And it saved us money. And I thought I sent them out here, because I know they talked to Eric, that we had some problems with the mobile data terminal issue, so we couldn't work that out. But just for direct internet service and telephone, there's no reason. So, we'll see if we can't get the telephone down. But it might be $3,500 instead of $4,800.
Did you come up with a number of 10%? You're saying 10? Okay. Out of your... Out of that estimated cash, as far as that carryover, Sue's saying she took... She's estimating that there is going to be 10,000 left over out of this budget as part of that $425,000 carryover.
Estimated.
Now, what else to do? With your budget.
Oh, yeah. What you get?
Thanks. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Bob, you wanna... Bob's here to represent the Welcome Center. Sandra was on an airplane headed to France or somewhere.
Is this a scheduled vacation for somebody?
Yeah, she had it scheduled.
And we have to talk about her department when she's not here? That's the best we can do?
No. But he's prepared to talk about some things that she and he have discussed. The chairman of the Tourism Advisory Council, one of their goals is to advise you on marketing and expenditures for tourism. And I'm not gonna get into specific budget items as maybe you... Because I don't wanna speak for Sandra. We are discussing those issues. When she gets back, she will come to you with a line-by-line review. She has asked for our input from the Tourism Advisory Council. We've been giving that. I would just say, as you look at her budget, it appears as though there's a $5,000 increase in salary. That is not really truly an increase from... There's $5,000 there that comes from the IDC for Assistance in Economic Development. If you look in your general revenue account, you have an offset of $5,000. If you go down to items for resale, for example, it's a small item, $1,200. Those are things that she buys and sells to the public. There's a $3,000 plus on the revenue side. And probably the bigger ones, if you look on the second page, tour expenses, what that is, is the Welcome Center handles all the passports. So, they have those expenses that they have to pay to the house. If you look in the revenue side of your... In your general revenue, there'll be a $28,000 entry because they get a dollar for every adult passport that they sell as a handling fee out of the Welcome Center. And the other thing is down on capital outlay, the co-op grant. This is the matching program with the State of Missouri Department of Tourism. We have to... We pay upfront, and then they reimburse us with a match. So, we'll pay $22,000 upfront. But in the general revenue account, there is a revenue of $11,000 that's gonna come back. They give us a 50% match. So, those kind of things, if you say, "Okay, let's reduce those," you're gonna have to end up reducing on the other side of the equation, too. That doesn't mean that we're not gonna look at all these individual accounts to see what we're doing. I spent 30-some years in business, and I know when resources are tight, you gotta look at all your costs. I mean, it's just a fact of life. And Sandra and I, when she gets back, we will do that, and we will come back with... What is her return schedule? I think she's a week. She'll be back. But we'll go through each one of these. We look at the past. I will tell you that it has been a pleasure working with Sandra over the last year. She's done a lot of innovative stuff. The Tourism Advisory Council was always looking for return on investment on our print ads and things like that. She's changed where we do print ads to the ones where we get the most people writing in for brochures and coming to visit us. We've done a lot more with using free advertising where we can. I don't know if you ever have seen the Department of Missouri's annual tourism booklet. We significantly increased our presence here. That's free advertising, but it was worked by Sandra and the Tourism Advisory Committee going out and working with businesses to get listed in there. We do a lot of social media advertising, which, again, free is free. We've done training in that for our businesses during the last year. So, I think we're spending our marketing dollars a lot more effectively and more economically than we've done in the past. That doesn't mean we're not gonna look at each one of these. I know in talking with hers, I think if you look, probably the print budget is up a little bit. One of the things we wanna do is... You've all seen our visitor brochure. It's a fold-out thing, glossy. Visitors use that when they walk around town. So, that's an expensive little map. And unfortunately, that's really to get people here. And we're talking about doing a new, like a tear-off sheet downtown map that we can at least advertise a lot more of our history than we have in the booklet or in the visitor guide right now. We don't say anything about Audubon. We don't say anything about Senator Lynn and all of that stuff. And it's really a part of our fabric of what we're trying to sell here in St. Genevieve. And so, that's why that's up a little bit this next year, is to print those. And I think it will have, down the road, a savings in printing that multicolored booklet. Just a little bit, this year, we always track how many visitors come through the Welcome Center. During the city's fiscal year, we're up 15% over the previous fiscal year to date. So, I mean, that's encouraging signs. It's not all encouraging out there. We know that lodging tax is down a little bit this year from what we have had in the past. Some of that is because 67% of our lodging tax comes from hotel motels, not the B&amp;Bs. B&amp;Bs are traditionally more tourism-related. Over the last several years, the hotel motels have been very active with wholesome work, Mississippi Lime Company work, and that kind of dropped off, and we could see it in the numbers. So, I'm not saying there's all good news out there. We gotta build that back also. One thing I would encourage you, when you look at revenues as a government, well, one way you deal with this is to cut costs, and that's what we're all sitting here talking about. The other thing you do is raise revenue. Now, if you say one method you have is called raising taxes, and as a taxpayer, probably all of you are not gonna stand up and vote for that. The other way you do it is to increase sales tax, real estate taxes, in terms of expanding it. I did a little survey in my downtown area. We have set... And I'm talking like Main from Market over to the North Gaborie and maybe up to Third Street, some on Fourth Street on Market. We have seven vacant homes. We have 15 vacant businesses. And we have what I call nine underutilized businesses. Those are businesses that are only open two days a week. And we gotta fill those spots. If we're gonna really progress here in the downtown area, we've gotta fill those. You know, they say... You hear people say, "Well, I'd start a business if we had more people." And on the other hand, people say, "I'd come if there were more businesses." So, we've gotta break that. And there are some good things going on in town. You know about the... You know, what the church is doing with the Rosier Building, with the banquet center there, what we're doing with the hotel? That's about $3 million worth of investment in a two-block area. It's not chicken feed. We need for that to be successful. But I would... I'm talking more as a tourism guy now and a taxpayer. I would hope we start looking more at ways to increase revenue through more businesses and people in the downtown area. You did great things with the TIF. We gotta make that happen. We gotta preach it. We gotta give people assistance to do that project. It's gotta be, I think, a government... We have a lot of not-for-profits that work on these things, like the Downtown Renewal Group, the Chamber of Commerce. We've gotta come together to make this happen again. And it could, and it has to. So, that... I kinda look...
Is that what we do in 2015?
Well...
To make the ends meet.
Pardon?
To make the ends meet.
Well, part of it is what we're doing here is cutting costs. But you also gotta figure out... This is one of the few departments that can help generate revenue, not just spend revenue. And we gotta spend...
I wasn't here when the decision was made, you know, to ramp up tourism marketing using general revenue funds for it. The expectation, however, I'm sure it was, that that's an investment and one that if well made, has a return in terms of increased sales tax and increased commerce.
The city has long been the manager of the Welcome Center and funded it. Now, they got funds from other sources.
Not just keeping the Welcome Center open, though. It's the marketing effort that I think was increased.
Part of that is, you know, where the funds come from, too, over periods of time. I will tell you that I'm gonna work with Sandra to look at these line items to see what we can cut out of there, because we know what kind of situation we're in.
Every tax dollar given by tourism is a tax dollar the city of Seagarden has the opportunity to spend that didn't come from the people who live here and pay their taxes here. It is a revenue source. And the investment in tourism, it's sort of like watering your grass. If you decide to quit watering your grass for six months and it's dry, your grass is gonna die. So, you have to completely replace your yard. You can't just start watering again and expect it to take off and keep going. So, the... If... I think they have to be conscientious that if we don't continue to support the tourism efforts, then many years of investment could be spoiled.
$2,000 is one that doesn't have the same demand for local services that a non... A resident dollar generates. Because they're here and they're going. And so, take a desk in a school.
It's kind of free money.
Kind of free.
So, are we still tracking businesses as far as have they increased? You were saying 15% of tour...
That's the people that walk into the Welcome Center.
Okay.
We do some sampling of downtown businesses, the B&amp;Bs.
Tourism-sensitive businesses.
Right.
And the goal of that was to determine whether there was a change in that revenue source versus the general sales tax revenue as a way of gauging whether your investment in marketing for tourism was...
Is being successful.
Was producing.
Yeah.
And it's marginally better.
It's marginally better. Some are lower. And one, I think, I can't remember, restaurants were a little lower than during the last look, and lodging was up or the other way around. We did... I hate to use whether, but we did struggle a little bit in January, February, and March this year. But, you know, one of the things we're talking about is what... How do we overcome that?
We keep it warm here.
Yeah. And we did see that. It was two years ago, we had that significantly warm January, February. It was a real bump.
So, we're running out of time here, Bob. Sandra, if not here?
So, when... You're going to... When do you need it?
Tonight.
Tonight?
But it's...
Oh, did you say tonight?
Tonight. I guess I misunderstood and thought you and she were working on it and had those figures We're gonna have to obviously have another meeting, so...
I'm just surprised...
We're gonna have to have it next week.
I don't understand why we scheduled tourism at night when the department head couldn't be here. That's just obviously gonna require another meeting.
We scheduled this meeting, and I was informed that Sandra was gonna be out of town. We're gonna reschedule a meeting.
She's not going back in two weeks.
I thought she's... It's two weeks?
Two weeks.
Well, I assume she has an email service.
I guess. We're gonna make decisions. You didn't discuss any specific line items?
We looked at various line items. We did not come to a formal conclusion on those. And I will... We looked at printing. I'll explain what we planned to do there. We looked at holiday decorations. Take that down.
You got landscaping improvements, $1,500.
Yeah. I don't know if you know how bad that was down there. There's been a lot of volunteer labor. And I will say, that's one other thing that she's developed. She gets volunteer labor to work on weekends.
They received a grant as well from the gardeners.
Well, from the gardeners. But also, we have this summer program where people are in costume walking around. Those are all volunteers. There's been volunteer people working on landscaping. I know I did it myself. Trying to remember.
What item was that?
Eighty forty.
I'm trying to remember what this building improvement thing is. There's been a little, very little work done on that building. It was built in the 80s.
Wasn't she talking about replacing an air conditioner?
That's 6810, is that figure?
Um, it's like $6,100 on this one.
Oh, it's not in there?
Okay.
Okay. Bob, was the co-op meeting the other night? Is the co-op match really gonna be 22?
Well, that's...
Of course, that's coming from the Tourism Tax Commission anyway, right?
No. That comes out of this department budget.
That's right, out of this department.
And 11... We have to have that money upfront. So, that's why it's in the department budget. When you get credit for those, which happens throughout the year, we'll get $11,000 back.
Okay. All right.
There's $11,000.
There was $11,000.
Yeah.
What is the value of workstep screenings for people that work at the Welcome Center?
What'd you say, Tom?
The line item 5007. Maybe I don't understand workstep screenings, but...
Well, we hire somebody, we go through the workstep screening, and they're evaluated for range of motion, ability to perform the work in each of the categories. Every job has a series of tests that are based on the work that's expected of that person. So, a person in tourism would have to be doing kind of a clerical position and have to have those range of motions.
I mean...
And it sets the base data for that person, so they don't come back next year and say, "I screwed up my shoulder."
Do they really set a baseline?
Yeah.
I mean, is that completely a physical? It's not just seeing if they can step up, step, and... I don't understand the process, but, I mean, if we get an actual medical baseline, I'm happy with spending the money. But if we just don't get that, I'm not... We'll have to spend the money for particular physicians, if they're gonna work at the street department or the police department. Yes, obviously, we need to make sure... or the police department, yes, obviously, we need to make sure they're fit enough to perform their job duties listed in their-
Every physician has specific tests that they administer-
I understand.
That are designed to determine if the person coming in has a physical capability of performing that work.
So that's significantly different than a baseline of their, of their physical health.
Well, other than their internal health, it is a evaluation of their physical ability to perform the job.
I mean, I guess I'm just looking at the jobs down there. I don't know. What are they, are they climbing ladders? And maybe they are. Maybe I just don't recognize that.
You know, you gotta lift a box of paper, carpal tunnel, stub, arm?
Yeah, but-
Carpal tunnel, stub.
That's what I'm saying. They're not, I don't know what works at desks. Are they evaluating someone for their current health as far as carpal tunnel disease?
Yes.
How do they do that? Just, we'll talk about that later. But that's interesting. I didn't know you could do that.
Well, we need to go over there because I don't care.
Yeah, I would like to see what our money buys there. I see it for a wide variety of the jobs that we have. But I'm just thinking, if somebody, I don't, maybe there's more to it than I recognize.
Well, you know, it is a policy decision. It's not, it's one that was made prior to my arrival here.
Well, and maybe it's-
And maybe it's one we can change. I mean, it's just a-
Maybe there's value there, and maybe I just don't understand. That would not be the first thing I didn't understand.
And I can't say that in the time that I've been here, we've ever had a claim for which we were able to defend a, present a workman's comp claim based on the data that worksteps provided us. That happened. I don't know. Has that happened to your knowledge at all?
No, but I think that's why it's in place, to pre, help prevent it from happening.
Could you look at the travel and lodging meeting and conferences and make sure you hit the real important, maybe cut a little bit?
Teddy asked about travel and conferences. There's probably two primary, primary conferences. One is the Missouri Tourism Conference. And the other one is with the, I can't remember the exact name, but it has to do with bus tours and things of that sort. A few years ago, we were advertising all on the East Coast. Now we're advertising in the Midwest. It's gonna be in St. Louis next year. We wanna have a-
The group tours?
It's group tours, yeah.
I think there's a big difference in a conference that tourism folks need to go to. That's a networking opportunity. It's really important that that occurs as opposed to maybe some other, the police department doesn't need a lot of networking, right? But I think that that's a, don't lose sight of the importance of that aspect of conferences for the tourism.
Well, I just asked that, maybe look at it, maybe-
Yeah.
Get the, get the ones you really need to hit.
Right.
See where it comes out.
But if you take all of the things that you and Sandra have discussed as far as line items are concerned, and we went ahead and eliminated all of them.
About five or six thousand.
About five or six thousand.
Because a lot of these things are not controlled by her. I mean, once you do the labor, all those other things with insurance and things like that are-
Same, same problem Mick had.
Right, right. I mean, it's-
Out of, out of control of building insurance rates.
I did notice, looking, your liability insurance has been going up over the last few years. And you might wanna look at that in addition to your other insurances that you're looking at. That's just an observation. At least the allocations to the-
Is there a well-considered number of dollar, number of tourism dollars coming in annually? I mean, it would have to be a, it's such a convoluted-
It is convoluted. Not everybody goes to the welcome center. We know that. There are some general figures, and I don't know them off the top of my head, that the Department of Missouri looks at for every dollar. You know, this is what you kinda get back in terms of.
Yeah, I just didn't know if maybe somebody knew that, looked at, compared to that.
You know, if you look, you know, last year, her adopted budget was two sixty-six and this year's two thirty-seven. So, she's already taken thirty thousand dollars. Not that she's gonna use the two sixty-six. She's, she'll come in probably thirty thousand under the two thirty-seven, so.
Well, as Sue just pointed out and reminded me, the grants reduced, so the revenue was also reduced, so.
That'd be about ten, that'd be about ten thousand.
The grant got, the total grant got reduced?
Yeah. It went from forty-nine seventy to twenty-two thousand.
Okay. So it went from twenty-five thousand down to eleven, so it got reduced. You're taking the total expenditure there. We're only gonna get half of it back.
We're getting half of that back.
We got half of that back.
So, really, we're from twenty-five, our expenditure, true expenditure went from twenty-five to eleven, right? So, about fourteen thousand.
The state changed the criteria about how much money they give various counties. And started basing it on hotel rooms. And that, which really helped the St. Louis, Kansas City, Columbia, and Branson areas. The other thing we will be looking for is grants to help mitigate these issues, too. As Tom said, we get some from the master gardeners for beautification. And if you've been by there lately, it looks a lot better than it did.
Has our lodging tax kept up with other municipalities?
In terms of what?
Increases, or, I mean, are we, is our lodging tax more than, say, Festus or?
Festus doesn't have a lodging tax.
On our hotels and stuff?
Festus does.
They do. I know Farmington just put theirs in. You have, you can only look at rates. How much is there? We have a two percent, and you'll see it all over from less than two percent to four percent. And I've seen a list of that across the state of Missouri.
So, we're on the lower end?
About average.
About average, yeah. And it's just on the city.
All right, so, we can anticipate about a five thousand.
About that, yeah.
Without gutting the marketing program.
Disastrously.
That's kinda to Tom's point. You don't wanna stop watering.
I do, I personally feel we're getting a better bang for our buck than we were two years ago, where we're spending our dollars. We started to recognize, a lot of the, we're doing a lot more in St. Louis, Belleville, that sort of thing. And, you know, we did some TV commercials. Tourism Tax Commission helped with that. We've done some billboards. I think it's not gonna help two thousand and fifteen. We gotta get that arrowhead out on the highway for the National Park site. That'll be a significant boost of tourism here in this, in the city, too. But that's not next year.
And I've asked this question before. In what year does the Board of Alderman draw a line and say, "Have we gotten that return we expected to get?"
Well, probably when we close the town down.
Yeah, okay.
There's only, I mean, hell, you gotta raise revenues somehow. And we all know how difficult it is to raise taxes. So we gotta figure out some other ways to do that.
Well, my, my response to your point about buildings is, and to, the same response I've always given to the economic development question. You know, government doesn't create jobs or invest risk capital. Private sector does that. You know, what we can do is, we can create an environment that is conducive to investment by, by providing a predictable environment that gives incentives in areas that we can to stimulate the kind of investment we'd like to see for our community. That's, TIF is an example of that. You know, trying to make it easier for somebody to open a business, which I think we're kind of-
I can tell you from just personal experience of learning how to open a business and not knowing how to do it to begin with, it is not easy. It's not just the city. It's state. It is extremely difficult to figure out how to open a business. And how you can facilitate that through the, on the city's sides of the processes, I think that would be something the city could do to help economically develop.
Problem is, we have this dual hat. We have this, one hat where we promote and encourage, and this other hat where we regulate and control. And it's-
But it's much more difficult-
Please come to our town. "Oh, by the way, you gotta put up this size sign, and you gotta set back your building this far, and you gotta, you know."
But part of that is the education in the beginning, knowing that you have to do those things. And how we work with the entities that are bringing, trying to bring businesses in to facilitate those processes, that's, that's what it's all about.
Most certainly, how that, the regulatory issues are handled. If they're handled in a welcoming, resourceful way to help people, or if they're handled in a, in a cold, non-productive way. And I think we, we went through a period where, just recently, that was an issue. And we have a new person in our compliance position now. And I hope that that person fully understands that they are to be a resource. And they are to help people, residents, businesses, figure out how to get things done. Not only to tell them why they can't do it, that you can't do it like that, but we think you could do it like this, to be a resource. And tourism is one of the few ways we can generate money, short of raising taxes.
Okay, so we'll get, look forward to getting that. And we can't wait for Sandra to get that. So we'll do a lot more on it.
Well, I will be emailing her.
Send emails to her, and we'll get it worked out.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. You know, the problem is, Dave's the one we're kinda like trying to save here. I mean, the conclusion we came to at our last meeting was, we have no infrastructure improvements scheduled. And, and the desire was to figure out a way, because we think the citizens expect their streets to get fixed. Now, at what cost? And, and I don't think, I mean, they expect their streets to get fixed and have them be unsafe, or not be able to protect their property from fire. And, but ultimately, the question comes down to how much do we have and what can we wisely spend it on? So he's going last.
Well, I guess I can start by saying, at least the budget that I was given tonight is not the budget that I submitted. And I understand some of the things have been taken out to show the expense, the expenses that I-
Well, everything that you had, that you submitted is either reflected-
Right. And I didn't get that copy. So I was just gonna say, another thing that I noted, I don't think the Excel was working correctly and didn't populate correctly. The numbers that are bottom line on the one that I got are not accurate. Again, just looking at it quickly, if you go line item to line item from what the approved, or the adopted two thousand and fourteen budget and the proposed fifteen budget, the major changes, first of it in salary, and I certainly don't wanna go line item by line item, but I will point out the differences. It's a fourteen, or a four thousand dollar reduction from fourteen. In the budget that I was given, there's a two thousand dollar increase for ITI, which is seventy-one ninety, the line item. Other than that, it's all reductions. So according to my calculations, I'm, what, without the three things that I proposed to add, I am sixteen thousand dollars, two hundred and eight, or sixteen thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars under where I was in two thousand and fourteen.
All right, slow down here.
Okay.
Start over.
Start over. Take two. I, I was just looking while the other department heads and representatives were, were going through theirs, comparing each line item, because it shows that I, that I had a-
Sue's admitting-
-thirteen thousand dollar increase. But looking, two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and fifteen, all I had were decreases with the exception of ITI.
His actual bottom line is eight hundred and forty-one thousand and thirty-three dollars.
I had eight thirty-seven, seven eighty-three, but that could be-
What bottom line is that?
On page fourteen.
Okay, so that is fifteen proposed bottom line.
Thirty-three?
How much was it?
I had eight thirty-seven, seven eighty-three. Because I actually, well, I don't know why I have that. Looking at, at the, the bottom line on services and repairs, there's, there's no increase from fourteen to fifteen, and it shows three thousand dollars higher there.
What was that that you unlisted?
On the services and repairs block, there's, there's no increase there. And it, it shows a three thousand dollar increase on the, on the printout that I have.
Yeah, but doesn't it show you I spent one hundred and sixteen?
Going from the adopted to-
I'm going from the adopted to the proposed.
Yeah. I don't either. Hey, chief, which services and repairs, which line?
What line item?
It's, it's on page fourteen. It's the top block that starts at-
What line item? You talked all?
I, every line item. In that block from sixty-six oh-two to seventy-one thirty-seven, the bottom line shows one eleven fourteen on fourteen, two thousand and fourteen, and then one fourteen, two sixty-four for the proposed two thousand and fifteen. But there's no increase between, between the two of them. So I think it's just a, it's just a Excel error where it didn't, where it didn't populate. So I added-
One sixteen, you're going to the letter, year one sixteen, yeah?
So, so if my calculations are correct, I'm sixteen thousand dollars under where I asked last year, minus the three things that I put in for.
In the law enforcement insurance, we're showing that we paid ninety-six sixty-eight oh eight.
This year, they only budgeted twenty-eight oh eight. That's thirty-one thirty-seven?
I don't- Thirty-one thirty-seven.
Thirty-one thirty-seven. Will you look at the ten month for this budget?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure about that.
Are we sure that's a good number?
I'm not sure about that. Hey, Sue, are we sure on the seventy-one thirty-seven number?
For this year, that we spent like four-
Was that, that big an increase?
That big an increase.
It was actually going down for whatever reason over some other line items previously.
Oh, was it?
For prior insurance company.
So we probably need to raise that.
Now this is exact.
So, will you clarify what numbers changed so they, they-
The bottom line, and what I just told you was, it's eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. There's two formulas mixed up.
For what? For the proposed budget?
His total expenditures-
For the proposed budget?
For the proposed budget.
Eight hundred and thirty-seven.
I'm sorry. It's eight thirty-seven, seven eighty-three.
Okay.
Sixteen thousand.
And eight sixty-seven budgeted, eight thirty-seven?
That, that, yes, that wasn't, say, from, from the two thousand and fourteen adopted budget, where I was at last year.
So, if you had a hundred and eleven thousand in law, in, in those services and repairs in fourteen, and we're at the rate of a hundred and sixteen thousand, four sixty-two-
Right. And I, I had noticed the law enforcement insurance increasing that much. So that's something that we'll need to amend for the proposed.
So that twenty-eight, eight oh eight is gonna go-
To ten thousand.
To 10,000.
But your liability could go down to probably three.
Which one is that?
The one right above it.
Okay.
Eric, line item 7050 dispatching. It's currently $9,000 over budget for this year, but we've got the same $70,000 number in for next year. We're already at 79,000. What's the, why is that?
When, when, we, we essentially are subcontractors for the county on that, or, or subleased through the county. The county handles all of the dispatching fees and bills us. So we had a conversation with the commission, and, and most of this has been documented in the papers. But my understanding was, we would, we would review that annually. When I went through all the MDT stuff, trying to get the MDTs passed, we were hoping there would be a reduction in services that, that we were drawing from dispatch. And talking to the county, they, my understanding was they were in agreement with that. So basically, a pay-for-usage type thing. They get one lump sum bill and divide it between us, the Sheriff's Department, and the ambulance district. We saw a significant decrease in usage by going to the MDTs, which we, which we projected. However, our budget year is October, their budget year is January, so I, I projected what we had used and calculated that for a usage fee. We had another meeting with county and decided that maybe a three-year review would be more accurate or more, more fair for everybody. If we have a big spike, or the Sheriff's Department has a big spike as opposed to adjusting that every year, we would adjust it every three years, which is when their contract is due. So, so this next year will be the first year of that calculation. So I'm assuming that, that our projections, again, from, from last year will be the same as they were this year. Because this, this number would have been accurate for the usage that we have. When we recalculate that on the three-year, because our contract is due with St. Francis County this year, I believe that will be an accurate number.
Chief, could you tell me, the motor vehicle, is that like the lights and...
No, that's, that's the lease purchase, the lease, yeah, the, the dollar amount that we own, the two leases that we still have active. That, that does sometimes include the lights and whatnot. We, we sometimes include that, a fitting cost in the, in the cost of the new vehicles. The last, the last vehicles that we bought, we actually used the money that we made from selling our, our vehicles to buy the equipment. So, so the last lease that we entered into didn't reflect any, any outfitting costs.
It's like 7125, your building insurance, you're over for this year, so do you think you should budget more for that for next year?
I, to be honest with you, I don't, I don't do any of the, any of the, the insurance things, those are all done through, through Sue and Pam.
7125, what's the insurance?
Wasn't that because we had to pay for an extra six months or something? Because they redid the building part, that was like prorated because they changed our renewal dates, so we had to pay for that.
Pick up three extra months payment to get us on their cycle.
So we should expect that it goes back to long, that one next year?
Yeah, some of those, the electricity and, and some of those are such real numbers that I just get those from, they, they input it for me.
You know, Chief, I must come in, you know, when you look at the last four budgets that, you know, it's, it's like the lowest budget in the last four years. And I know that you'll come in under, and there's always money that you, we get back from the police department using, are you all right, sir?
Actually, this year, unless you do something next month, I mean, you should have coming up like 100,000, and then some under budget.
And, and some of that, I know that shocks some people sometimes, like if we're inflating our budgets beginning with. I, I very seldom go through an entire fiscal year with the full staff, and once you lose somebody, it's usually at least a two-month, three-month process trying to, trying to get somebody else hired and, and in there. This, this year, and the, the reason for the large increase this year, you know, obviously we had the two pretty severe illnesses and family medical leave situation with two of those, so it was one where we were still paying either salary or insurance for several months and couldn't, couldn't really hire somebody until that was completed. So I, I, knock on wood, if everything goes as planned, I'll stay at full staff and, and hopefully we'll be a little closer next year, which is probably not what you guys wanna hear, but we'll certainly make things...
You currently are full staff?
I am currently full staff, yes, sir.
And that is, how many people?
Ten, ten officers, including myself, and then one part-time civilian clerk. As, for the new members, a couple of years ago, we combined the police clerk and court clerk positions, so half of first salary comes out of the judicial line item and half of it comes out of, out of the police's line item. So I, I guess if I can, maybe it's not the time, but the, the things that I asked for in this budget, and I think the one thing that I'm going to, obviously I can't insist on anything, but the one thing I would feel very strongly about, I, I asked for $10,000 for body worn cameras. The, the vehicle cameras that we have, we have 10 vehicles, are about $5,000 apiece. Some of them are failing, most of them are failing to replace them. I asked for that in last year's budget, and obviously there's not a surplus of $60,000 laying around, $50,000. We've looked at a, a body worn camera option, which is $1,000 per officer, especially in light of what's going on up north. I think it's a, it's money well spent for us to, to help justify or, or mostly justify should we have any situation. And I'm not saying that we're gonna have any deadly force situations, knock on wood, but any situation, any complaint that comes up, these cameras are, are very beneficial to the city and to us as, as administrators.
So that's a real number, $1,000 per unit?
Yes, yes, and that was in...
No other software or even, just that's a real number?
My understanding is that's real numbers. That was researched from, from Jason Crump. My understanding is we'd be up and going with that. And, and not a huge savings, but, you know, with the vehicles, the administrators didn't have cameras in their cars. If you guys thought we needed to go without cameras for the administrators, that, that would save a couple thousand dollars. But I think at the very minimum, our sergeants and officers need to have them.
And that could potentially cut down on your investigation of some of the crimes too.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
There's some savings that can be seen.
Liability, yes.
Protection for both sides of every incident.
How about grants?
And talking about the vest, about the vest...
Well, the vests, I had in there for vests, there is a block grant that's up that, that we have an application in that I'm hoping to have approved to the next budget to submit. It's the Missouri Block Grant, and I'm asking for, for the vests, for the officers for that, and that's gonna be about the same amount, am I right?
There's no grants for the cameras?
The, the same grant would, would apply for, for the cameras. It's a $10,000 max on, on those cameras, or, I'm sorry, on that, on that grant cycle. Grants have really dried up. We, we put in for a grant through State Farm, I believe it was, for, for cameras last year, and were turned down for that. We, we've researched grants and, and a lot of the federal, federal grant money has gone. We're not seeing a whole lot of, of local money coming available. We would certainly be happy to apply through the, through the community foundation for a grant. Typically, our requests on that are significantly less than, than some other agencies. But certainly, $10,000 may, I mean, they, they funded $10,000 last year for the generators, so our intention is to apply for, for either the vests or the, or the cameras through one of those grants. However, with this being budget time, we would like to have the money in there should the grants not, not be funded.
Hey, Chief?
Yes, sir.
And line number 5001, you had adopted budget for 2014, you had $15,000 for overtime. Looks like you're gonna end up spending about 10,000, but you put 15,000 back in there again. The reason for that is because the officer's leaving and you're making it up for them leaving by giving overtime, or is it an extra caseload or what?
Mostly vacations and, and jerk fed and county fairs, paying overtime for that. So we could certainly cut that, and, and we, we had cut that in the past, and then raised it again, realizing that we were gonna be a couple officers down, so we could probably cut that $5,000 there, or 3,000 add some over there, but...
On the two police cars, you got 16,000, that's just for lease.
That would've been a lease option again.
In any given month, with a 10-man crew, and go through the deployment of those 10 people, how the work schedule works out.
You want me to go through that now?
Yeah.
Okay. It's televised. It's televised. I'd be happy to do that.
All right, don't go through that now.
I, I can tell you that all 10 people do not work at one time ever, with the exception of, and even jerk fed, a majority of them will be on, but not all of them at one time.
So basically, all you're asking really for this year is the body worn cameras.
Correct, in, in addition to what we've had in the past.
So if you think that maybe overtime may be exaggerated by 5,000, that the cameras are 10, so it'd really only be an increase of five?
Correct.
Plus, we're coming in under budget this year again. And then maybe you get the fines moved back to the city, correct?
Yes, and we, we've had a meeting with Frank on that, and essentially, I still believe a majority of DWIs can come through the city, with the exception of, of any prior persistent offenders.
I mean, I just don't think that should ever happen. That's like me toting and my competitor get all the money. I don't understand that equation, but...
Yeah, I, I understand the concern, and, and be happy to talk about some of the reasoning behind it with you sometime. And, and like the mayor said, this is not 300 cases that's happened in the last six months. We may have a dozen cases, and, and some of those were required to go through the state anyways. But I, I understand your, I understand your concern.
We're looking for money.
Yeah, and, and, you know, we're, we're in a difficult position because, you know, essentially court revenue shouldn't be revenue, a revenue source. You know, and however, the, the DWIs that are written, we are encouraging run through the city whenever possible.
Best-case scenario, how might that change our general revenue?
The DWIs?
Just, just a dollar figure?
$3,000 a year.
A year?
Three, three to, three to five, maybe, or less, or more, I don't know.
For budgetary purposes, how might that change?
Well, we've looked at, we've looked at the last three years, and there's not enough of an average to, to say that we're gonna get this many number of DWIs a year. I mean, really, it's DWIs that are the source of, of conflict right now, so, you know, that specific crime, I don't know how many are gonna be arrested.
I know that, but that's the problem with budgeting, you never know.
Looking at where we're at right now, we could say maybe $3,000.
Now, out of the, Sue just said, out of that 425, that estimated cash, she was counting on 120 of it.
Coming from us.
Coming from the short of, of the job they did with the budget this year, so...
Do we have a negotiated rate with the different fuel stations on our fuel, or do we pay for like the police cars, the city trucks? Do they pay full amount at the gas pumps?
No, but two years ago, we, we get a per gallon discount. And so I asked the distributors that operate, not operate the local station, people who operate the local stations, to give me a proposal for a discount so we could decide what's the best use of city funds. One said, I'm not doing it. Pay, pay whatever you pay the pump, whatever the pump price is. Another one gave me a discount that was half of the third one. So we concentrate on buying our fuel from the one that gives us the highest discount.
How's that compared to if we had our own fueling like the county does and like how the state patrol does? I mean...
State patrol has, has their own through MoDOT, but county has, has a pay card.
Or they have gas cards.
Yeah, like an express card that they can buy at anybody that subscribes to that company.
I mean, would there be a way to put something in behind the City Works building or something, and we fuel our own equipment, or...
Well, you can, I mean, I've had fuel tanks in, in various places.
I mean, it'll cost more money upfront, but I mean, is that potential savings in the future, or are we getting a decent enough discount not to worry about it?
I don't think we get enough discount to pay for the cost of building, maintaining, and the regulatory fees, which is really the big deal.
Right.
I mean, you put up a tank, and all of a sudden, you've got DNR compliance regulations and reporting, and it just gets really expensive.
And we get a, we get a nice printout now and can manage and make sure everybody's using it correctly, and, and we have some oversight there that would be a little bit of concern for me.
What about going to the fleet card, like...
As I was saying, we need to look into fleet cards.
I, I proposed that a couple of years ago. There is a fee for that, and, and we, we had, we had looked into that. It was actually shot down a couple of years ago, but I can certainly...
But is that, did you take into consideration the fire trucks, the city, you know, the street trucks, and I, I mean, or was it just the police department you looked at on it?
No, it would, it would've been citywide, and I, I don't even have those, those figures with me now. I, I look through the same company that Sheriff's Department uses and a couple other ones. And, and essentially, we get the service now that we would get with a fleet car at any, at any gas station that we, we're going to now. I mean, they have 24-hour service, they don't have diesel though, so...
We've gotta go out to sole source for diesel. But you still could use a fleet car and diesel out there.
Right.
They all take the fleet car. So let's revisit that, see, see what...
Yeah, I knew there was, there was a per, per-vehicle charge for that.
There may not be enough volume to recover the actual cost of participating in the fleet program.
And it, it didn't seem like it was astronomical, but, but there is some...
Well, it's another look.
Yeah.
As times go on, though, they change them, they might overload the batch.
You know, I, I hate to be the one that brings this up, but I'm sure it's probably some, a lot of people around this table are thinking about it. And what kind of, I guess, you know, part of it gets back to what level of fire department do you have, what level of the police department do you have? And unfortunately, and again, I don't even know how to even quantify this, but, you know, unfortunately, you did have two people that were off most of the year, and I know you worked a lot overtime, and I'm sure Jason worked a lot overtime. But, and you say, and, and this year, okay, we, we had a pretty peaceful year, and next year might be completely the opposite. But you did it with eight people. Eight people next year might not be enough, but I, I guess what I'm saying, it's the level of the service is not gonna be as good with eight people as it was with 10.
Yeah, and it's interesting that you followed that up.
But what level do you, what level is everybody comfortable with, I guess is what the big question is.
You, you, it's interesting that you followed the reduction in court revenues with this. I mean, we were down, and now we're, we're down officers, now we're down in court revenue. I mean, you're not gonna be as productive with eight, and I think we've proven that. You know, there, there is no, there is no proactivity with eight, there's, there's work in your... You know, there, there is no, there is no proactivity with eight. There's, there's work in your calls and, and, and burnout. I mean, I would say morale is, is pretty low right now, which may not be this board's top priority. It's certainly my, one of my top priorities. If, if the board will remember, or some of them will remember, when I came on, we had eleven. We were budgeted for eleven. I gave up one with the hopes of getting a raise for everybody else, which didn't happen. I think that we can easily justify the eight people. I don't, I mean, I know the old adage is, "We've got the same population we had twenty years ago," but the population is not the same demographic. I mean, uh, you know, I, again, I hate to, I hate to make light or, or capitalize on the situation, but just like Ferguson, the disrespect, the total disrespect for law enforcement in that situation led to a very bad situation. The officer pulled up, from what I know, and I'm not gonna, again, capitalize on it, but the officer pulled up because two guys were walking down the middle of the street and said, "Get up on the sidewalk." And because they didn't, it turned into a big struggle and, and, and bad things happened. And I think that just that level of disrespect is, is resonant in, in most of our young population, uh, and, and-
Do, do you think it's a factor in problems that we had in the Market Street area, the merchant, merchant?
As far as the, the, the lack of respect? Yes.
I mean, I've just kind of been a resolution to that. I'm wondering if you'd retro that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I certainly think that, I, I don't know if that was so much a, a, a lack of respect for, for law enforcement as much as just a lack of respect for authority overall, any, anything, anything that, I mean, it's, that's just a particularly group, a particularly disrespectful group.
Lack of fear of consequences is probably a large factor in that particular reason.
And I, I would imagine, the day that they turn seventeen, some, they're gonna get a, a rude awakening with more respect than they know what to do with, because they know that there will be consequences at that time. I, I certainly think for, for an officer safety situation or, or, or standards, that, that ten officers is reasonable. I've not asked to go back up to eleven. You know, I think that we could justify eleven, but with our, with our budget, you know, we can certainly operate without, without the eleven. The eleventh person was, was kind of like a detective role. We're fortunate in that, that both Jason Crump and I are, are, have previous investigative experience, and, and I think Jason's done a phenomenal job in, in working in, in that, in addition to his other role. You know, the, the, the ten officers ideally is, is just a, a safe working number for the, the calls of service that we get. You know, we, we've kind of adopted the adage, "Two is one, and one is none." You know, in a domestic situation, you shouldn't go in with an officer. There are times, you know, especially when shorthanded, that we have one officer on at night. You know, there was, there was the incident recently with Sharon Hasty, where the water level was rising, and, and she was dissatisfied with not being notified. And, and some of that boiled down to the, the officer that we had on at that time just had his hands full. You know, that's not gonna happen every night. It's not gonna happen every week. You know, it might not happen every month, but there will be times when, when a call's gonna come in at night, and, and we are significantly short-staffed, and, and it could potentially be, be dangerous for our officers.
I gotta ask you on a, on a merchant street deal, where was the parents in all this?
Merchant Street.
The, the, oh, the situation you're talking about? The kids. Where were the parents in all this?
We, uh, under our, under our curfew ordinance, it actually holds the parents accountable. So, we had, had started, if we saw the, the juveniles out after hours, you know, the parents were contacted, and, and the action would've been taken on them. The problem that we run into is not all the incidents were happening after curfew. You know, the, the parents, through the juvenile justice system, are, are mandated to be there for any interviews. So, they were there during the interviews. They were there for hearing the allegations, and, and, and were aware. And I'm not saying that any of them are bad parents. That's certainly not what I'm saying. But they, they were made aware. They, they knew that it was going on. I don't know if it was a situation where they didn't believe that it was going on, or, you know, again, until they're, they're proven guilty, you know, they have the, the citizens have the, the assumption of, of innocence. You know, we've discussed this, this philosophy internally. However, the parents were made aware, and, and it's just a, just escalated to a bad situation. Hopefully, it's, it's contained to now and, and won't escalate any further.
Yeah, if we don't budget for something you expect to get a grant for, then always, when we accept a grant, we're gonna end the budget to reflect it. So, your, your point, I think, was, if we don't get the grant, you'd still like to be able to proceed, at least with the body cameras.
I, I, yes, that, that funding source won't even come available till after the first year. Neither funding source will. I mean, if that's, if, if we needed to wait till the beginning of the year, we could, but the sooner the better, in my opinion.
But if you buy them, you can't get a grant for them, so.
Right.
But would the grant cover the vests, then, or?
I, I'm hoping to, to seek funding through the, the Missouri block grant with the vests, and, and hopefully some funding, if, if it's not funded, some funding for, uh, the cameras through the San Genevieve Committee Foundation. And, and with our, with our liability insurance, they actually have a program. You pay in so much per month, which you can, which you can get back out for, for services that will reduce liability. I think there's like three thousand dollars in there. We can buy three cameras with that, if, if the city was willing to do that.
And I think that, that would be a reasonable use of those funds. The system, the purpose for which the fund was created, and its money is available to us. We'd be fools not to use it for something.
Right.
Anything else for Parrot?
Thank you all for your time.
Thanks.
All right. Let's talk about Dave.
Talk about Dave?
We haven't gotten to you yet, Dave. I'm still trying to save money. Talk about Dave, yeah, man?
You wanna talk about something before Dave?
I think we go over the general revenue.
All right, before we get to Dave. Just sit pretty there, Dave.
Oh, yeah, I am. Page four, the general revenue expenditures. Starting on page four, right?
So, we need to change line sixteen, correct? So, we need to change line sixteen, correct?
Police?
On page four.
Yes.
So, that should be the eight thirty-seven, seven eight three, or approximately, they're best.
Four, with eight forty. Eight seventy-seven, seven eight three, what I got?
I think we dropped, I mean, we dropped the other time, right? I had eight forty-two, nine seventy-five.
You're gonna give us an updated, um, version of that? That was, that was, that was a statement poses a question.
Voice implosion, basically.
Yeah.
All right, so starting on page six, we start with the legislative department, which is you. Thousand dollar membership.
Page numbers might be-
Page four.
Six, page five. And six for me.
Four for the ones we have.
I got two page sixes.
I got two page fours.
What is this, a thousand dollars, is that anything now?
Yes.
The page they are.
You all are on page five.
Y'all.
Y'all?
We're on page five now?
You said the legislative one?
Yes.
Yes.
That's page four.
It's, everybody has a different page. Some have two page fours, some have two-
Line eleven, right?
What's, what's the line number?
Right here, right?
Yeah, line eleven is-
Yeah, except I was, right.
Are you going to the whole legislative department?
Eleven, eleven through eighteen are the totals. So, the question then is, we need to look at, at, at the line items. The only membership that we pay, or propose to pay, is our MML membership. And then we deleted any traveler lodging, so, at least in next year's budget, we will not be attending their conference wherever they hold it. The next three, the capturing taxes, uh, isn't anything we control. You agree with me?
Yeah.
So, public access TV, you're all familiar with that. That's the charter revenue that we received, all of which is slated to go to the TV. Recycling center, the contract we have with county. The elections figure is based on, we don't have the election next year, do we? One's a one election we have next year? Can't control our liability insurance. De-rote out economic development. Never had anything in there.
That was a, no.
That was the, that was that, yes.
On the recycling center, is that a, is that a contract with the city that we give them twelve thousand, or?
We give them ten thousand, and then the other is for the maintenance for their forklift.
Well, that's how it comes up to, because I know there were different figures all, all along the way there.
We have another opportunity to review that contract. When's that over, so we can look at it again?
I'll have to check.
And then the assessors operations, that's what we pay them to collect our taxes and stuff for us?
Well, they do, yeah. They don't collect. They do the assessment, collector collects.
What does the ten to twelve thousand dollars to the recycling center, what does that pay for?
It's just a grant. We don't have a line item.
You just give it to them?
Give it to them, and they use it to cover whatever their expenses are.
Probably utilities and whatnot.
I mean, is it a year, a year grant?
Every, every, the contract calls for us to make that payment every year. I don't know the expiration date, yeah. It could be one of those that, you know, has no expiration date, but gives everybody the right to cancel with notice.
Sue, this public officials liability insurance, one from four, but we really are paying sixteen, it's going back to four, though? Does this got something to do with?
I asked that lady, like, four times, that question, and she said it would be four thousand next year. It was all with this new Midwest risk thing, they changed things around.
But it was really sixteen, I should?
Yeah. I don't know. I don't think it's a problem.
Had it go to sixteen, I guess, is the bigger question.
I've got that sheet where you look at.
Did some of the other departments drop, though, that reflected?
Well, some of them dropped, like Eric's law enforcement went up, and this one went up. They, like, like, I think the board and stuff was, like, classified under, they had it mixed through admin and different ones, and now they cleared it all here, and now they're gonna break it back down in the coming year.
We pay the rate that we agreed to pay.
Overall, we're actually lower.
Economic development. What happened to Sandra, part of her position? That money's coming in in a different line item?
Well, this was a, and I wasn't here when it was done, but you were making the payment with the county to fund an economic development officer who was, that's not it. All right.
This was that thing with Gerald Trautman, that L T R C.
Was that in lieu of a tip payment?
And that ended in twelve.
But I mean-
It was like so many years up to a certain dollar per gallon.
My specific question isn't, is-
That's what happened to-
It's in Sandra's welcome center budget.
Should we look at that a little differently? I mean, um-
You mean, just split it out differently?
Yeah. I mean, if, if she is spending part of her time doing something else, it might make a better, you know, more realistic reflection of the actual cost of the welcome center tourism. It's not a big deal. The money's there. We're just gonna spend it anyway. But showing that as zero, when I, you know, Bob was eloquent in his plea for the city to do more, from an economic development standpoint, and I sure echo that sentiment. Having a zero on economic development.
Well, you're just redefining the line item. It, it no longer reflects what it was, but it now can reflect something different, plus the line item. It actually creates a line item in the welcome center budget.
What this economic development line item really is, I, it, it really is, I don't know, maybe, maybe it just got worded that way, but it really was, as Sue said, a payment to Gerald Trautman for improvements that were done over the years, and that was the ending of it. I, I don't know how many years this thing had gone on, but it was, it was for utilities that he put in, that he ended up getting paid back for. Right?
Yeah, that's correct, and that was the agreement with something economic development. And I think that's how that got established like that.
So, in the judicial department, which is basically the judge and related expenses, no significant line item. He does attend the municipal judges' conference every year, and, uh, we, we preserve that line item.
We had a significant- Line fourteen, building inspection. I think that's what I'm looking at.
Where'd you go? You're back up to the general department?
I thought that's where you went back up to.
No, I'm on page seven.
He's, he's going through the individual, what's that?
What's the credit card fee? People who pay their court fines with credit cards, and they have to pay their car company?
Do we increase their fine by the percentage that the credit card company charges us? And if we don't, how quickly could we do that?
Judge sets the fine. We can ask the judge to put a surcharge on fines paid with credit cards, and we can do that. No different than a gas station, cash one price.
County courthouse, county courthouse, yeah.
Let's, let's make a note on that one, make that in for quick. Did, did I? Did I?
I don't think it's fair to ask the other departments to look at reducing their travel lodging conferences without discussing if we can reduce this one too.
I agree. What, what conferences do we need to go to?
Well.
I know it's not much, but we're only gonna get there by chipping away a little bit, I think.
No, she said just talk to the judge about knocking it down to eight hundred dollars instead of a thousand dollars.
We've asked it of all the other departments, so.
Or, I, is. I'll also talk to the, whether, what degrees mandatory. There's, there's some statutory requirement for judges and city attorneys to pursue continuing education and to attend the, but it doesn't mean it has to be a thousand dollars. It's the legal services.
Be the prosecuting attorney? That would be the prosecuting attorney, right?
Yes.
Which is?
Which would be part of Frank's.
Frank has two roles, one of which he gets paid a salary.
Prosecutor would be Carl Kinsky, yeah?
Well, not the municipal prosecutor.
Is that contract or what?
That's a contract.
Which is renewed when?
It's. Well, when I say it's a, it's an appointment. And it can be whoever the mayor and the board think should be filling that position. But he doesn't charge hourly as prosecuting attorney, it's a fixed fee versus the city attorney board, which is hourly.
Is the increase in the liability insurance from this year expected to return more or less to another rules?
Just a quick question. So when, let's say there's a, and I'm not gonna pick on any particular building, but there's a building not in compliance, and our city attorney works on it, but when it gets to the point to prosecute for not, does that fall under his prosecuting, or does that fall under his city attorney?
Well.
I mean, how do we make the difference there? Because if he's gonna prosecute for not being in compliance.
If I communicate with the city attorney about a citation for violation of the ordinance, that's his prosecutor's role, he doesn't bill for that. If I call him up and talk about, you know, contract, then that's the city attorney's clock.
So, I mean, even, even stuff like nuisance, I mean, I know when Eric's department writes a ticket and stuff, that goes through the prosecutor that way, but for like building ordinances or building problems, that still goes through his office as prosecutor, or his office as the city attorney following, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I understand.
I mean, it's kind of a.
Yeah, there is a gray area, but generally speaking, contact we have relative to a citation under the city ordinance is, is a function of his prosecutorial role. Now, let's say we cite somebody, and there's a building that we decided we needed to mitigate, and we acquired, the negotiations of the contract to acquire the building that we're gonna tear down was not part of the court system.
Right.
Became part of his city attorney role, and, and he really got very little to do on that, because I handled most of it. Although there was some communication with her attorney that had to go to my attorney.
Right.
So now you're on administration?
Yes.
We cut a little from sixty twenty-two and sixty-two twenty, because it looks like this year we're not gonna get anywhere near what was budgeted for those. Looks like we could almost cut each of those numbers in half.
What falls under publishing?
Our, our public notices. So, number of things for which we have to put a notice in the paper.
Just out of curiosity, for like the office supplies and janitorial supplies and all that, are you gonna be trying to utilize the buy board, or did you decide you're not gonna? I mean, have we looked into any of that yet? Even though it's not a major savings, but I mean. We, are we are gonna start utilizing that as much as?
That's our, we have, we've looked at a couple of things, not, actually not for these regular supplies, but no reason why we can't.
I mean, does it seem like it's gonna work pretty decent, or?
The two things that we kind of investigated, it didn't produce any better results than we were getting from reviving it.
Go back to sixty twenty-two and publishing. Is there a, is that just an order that we have to plug in, because we don't really know what we're gonna?
Well, if I, if I, gonna buy something.
Well, I understand why, I understand why we have to do that.
Yeah, you gotta do that.
But Beth brought up the, the, the issue of registered budget two thousand dollars, ten month actual, six hundred and forty-three.
Yeah, I think we can certainly do that, I think we have fun with that. I'd be reluctant to reduce it to five hundred dollars.
But reducing it to a thousand?
A thousand would be reasonable, yeah.
Okay.
How about sixty twenty-five membership? See, it went up a hundred dollars. Based on what?
Well, it's.
Is that part of, like, do we pay for membership in the chamber?
No, this is the clerks, association, the city managers, they're pretty, things we kind of have to belong to, because it's the way we get notification of legal changes in the law. We would, we would be taking a risk not to belong to those organizations, just because that's where the information comes from. And we spent, we spent five hundred and thirty-five this year, so they figured it, huh?
There's gonna be an increase to that, yeah?
Well, did, did, did city clerk change please?
No. I'm not sure, I mean, we went over by thirty-five dollars, so I guess that's why it increased.
I mean, you know, a hundred dollars.
Well, I know, but that's the highest, I mean, the highest bid for the last, if you look back on the budgets, I mean.
Yeah, it was five twenty-eight and eleven, yeah, I don't know.
Same question as John earlier with sixty-six ten, are car fees, is that something that can?
That we could recapture or we could charge?
There as well?
We don't now, if you come in and pay your water bill, it's not water, but if you come in and pay.
This is business license.
Absolutely, but we can do that just in the ordinance, right?
So by that fee, you're wanting everything that gets paid by credit card to see what you can add a charge to.
Just like a gas station, paid by cash at a certain price, and using credit cards.
But every restaurant is like that now, to use a credit card. Really? Yeah.
You think the gas company charges two fifty convenience day out there or something like that?
But someone can choose to write a check, people don't have to.
Sixty-seven hundred.
Most people don't notice, it's just automatically.
Well, we didn't contract it, we redid our.
And it's gonna be forty-five hundred by the end of the year, probably.
Sixty-eight ten, looks like, it's been a while since we even got close to that four thousand dollars.
People just don't spend it. It's, and we cannot spend it this year. It's like new carpet for the.
We're, we're looking at these other departments so hard, we gotta look at every department, to take that.
We'd already thought about that.
If we're not gonna spend it, take it out of there, reduce it to an amount that we can, so real.
Well, we do have some from time to time, things we need to do, but as far as the five thousand dollars for the department, that doesn't need to be in there.
If Dave says that in a few minutes, nobody's gonna put up with that. So, make it a real number.
Thousand, let's say three.
So seventy-one hundred again, we'll need that for every department?
Yep.
Just zero it out.
Well, I, you know, I, I mean, just, take the city clerk, for example, if we talk about, if we're talking about training and ongoing education. I, I don't know, I don't know how many, how much, how much is learned, how much is learned at conferences and how much is.
Listen, if it's, if there's value in it, I'm all for it.
So what does it cost you, depends on where it's held, but generally speaking?
Between, well, by the time you pay your, probably between eight and a thousand, and I can apply for a grant and see if I can get it, get the grant to pay for it, which I'm willing to do that.
I'm not saying zero it out.
Thousand for her.
Okay.
But I will apply for the grant to see if I can get it paid for.
About building insurance? On your job, is your deductibles around any, or?
Pardon me?
Building insurance?
Um, yeah, I mean, we could, I mean, this is thirty-three sixty-five. Is our building insurance, it's pretty high now.
It was like five thousand?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Yeah, I think. All right. We think our deductible on building insurance from our record memory is around five thousand now, I'm just saying, I have no idea.
What was the street department, Dan? Remember? When we had the fire, the deductible?
When did we have the fire?
No, no, with the deductible.
I don't know what that was, I wasn't part of that process.
Yeah, I think we needed that. This infrastructure, this two thousand infrastructure.
Eleven and twelve either. Nothing on eleven as well, either.
Okay. Yeah, we're gonna zero out infrastructure improvements for administrative. Uh, eight thousand. I don't know. Okay, we ready to move on to the building here?
Five, five, five thousand salaries, how many people's that?
It's, uh, one full-time and one part-time?
One and a half.
You have building inspections now?
Yeah.
We got a hundred dollars in work step screenings for somebody that might have to climb around on a construction site, and four hundred dollars for somebody that sits at a desk, got the whoppers in. Okay. About education, training, what does that consist of in sixteen twenty-one?
I said that was all those things that Brenda was.
Yeah, but I still think, a couple of things that need to get done is floodplain development administrator, which is, trip to Jeff City for a day. We've got Bob coming in. Gonna be one or two things that he needs to learn that he didn't learn from Jimmy. So I'd say that we could do that at a thousand dollars, and say fifteen hundred, we'd be able to cover those things.
Which items is?
Education and training.
Bob, who I just found out about yesterday.
Bob Bynell. He's a volunteer fireman, he's assistant chief.
Oh, okay, good.
And Zaris is doing the building inspection part-time, and.
Uh, one quick question.
Very knowledgeable.
No, no reflection of you whatsoever, that's fine, but why are we not told about people that are being hard? Is it, are, are, you know, I had people come to me on the street and say, hey, I hear you guys are.
Be glad to do that, there's a provision in the code that gives, as a matter of courtesy, I probably should be doing that.
Yeah, I'm not saying, you know, that you don't have, I'm just saying, you know, it'd probably be nice that we know.
Little email would be appreciated, yeah, I appreciate that.
How about sixty-two hundred as far as? Seems like that's a little high. Especially we only spent so under a thousand dollars three years prior to that, and we offered off the twenty-three hundred, and then we spent maybe eleven hundred so far.
We did like thirteen hundred on that, does that be a fair number?
They'll give you a lot more than that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Fourteen, fourteen hundred, okay.
At seventy-sixty-six, what's a special services zoning? What does that mean? I'm not arguing about the number, I just don't know what that means.
That was a zoning map that Brenda actually wanted to do last year, never got done, and we just carried that number forward in case she.
Is it something we're gonna do? So that goes away, seventy sixty, or seventy sixty-six.
What's special services?
I'm not sure what they have in.
We got professional services.
Yeah, do you roll that out?
Both of those or just one of those?
Special services.
What's professional service?
She says surveys of their buyout lots.
We're spending nothing on it this year, are we gonna spend something on it next year?
Yeah. No.
Well, but if we have to go out and hire a, if we have a grading plan or something that needs to be reviewed by an engineer, isn't it gonna fall into that?
In professional services?
Nope, we didn't spend anything in it in twenty thirteen, we didn't spend anything. Nope, we didn't spend anything in it in twenty thirteen, we didn't spend anything in it in twenty fourteen.
Yeah, I remember her discussing that and we didn't, oh, we didn't, she never did it.
We did then twenty fourteen, spent three hundred dollars. No, that was, that, the budget was. So we're gonna zero out seventy forty?
I'm kinda. If somebody came in with, since the mayor mentioned a grading plan, that required analyzing the. Hydrologic study, we'd have to hire somebody to do it. It hadn't happened in three years, uh, it's not gonna happen with the nursing home, because detention is already there, it generally happens when. Somebody builds a building on land that, you know, changes the, the grade and has to put in detention, and you have to calculate the, the runoff and how big the detention pond has to be to catch it.
So if that were to occur, why do you have to give the general ledger code that whatever you.
Pardon me?
Why, why do you have to call that professional services?
Because you hired an engineer to do it.
As opposed to something else?
Tell you call it whatever.
So what I'm getting at, if something were to occur, you wouldn't have to come to.
The better way to handle this was to change our fee schedule, which is not in there now, to allow us to collect as part of the building application fee, sufficient money to, to have that outside of view.
Let's take it out and get our coach change.
And you will be, we will be bringing the fee schedule changes when we bring the building permits to, building coach team.
Let's go ahead and take that down, and think that we're gonna cover it there.
It's.
Seventy-four new services to.
Seventy-sixty and seventy-sixty-six, and then let's talk about seventy-one hundred, or did we already talk about that and I forgot?
Well, it's kinda like an everybody's budget, but. Kept education and training, uh, a thousand dollars. That pays for their subscription or their, their.
What travel lodging conferences do they go to?
Somebody went to a lot.
Seventy-one hundred. Atlanta, seventy-one hundred.
She got money back on two, it was like one of those was that window workshop conference and we got like three thousand dollars back or something for that, that year.
Did she go to Philadelphia one time?
And then she went to, yeah, that was with that window workshop thing, that was some kinda historic preservation thing, and I think she got money back for that as well.
In twenty thirteen?
Yes.
If there's value in a conference that they go to, I'm okay with that, but what conference would that person go to to find?
I can't, I can't, in this case, I don't think it'll be conferences, but I think it would be covering travel for training, that we just, we give a thousand dollars to, to enroll them and then they need to get there and stay overnight.
So, we're gonna leave what, thousand bucks in there?
Okay, we can drop it down to five.
If they can adjust eighty oh five, that's a. Unless there's a plan.
That is for software for the building.
We're gonna cut that one? We'll take it out. Maybe next year, Bob's gonna have his handful figuring out what to do day to day, much less building new software systems.
We are community, community and economic development.
Is that a standard deal of chamber payment?
Yeah, what's the chamber payment, what, what, what do we pay them?
We pay them for a membership and five hundred dollars a month.
Do they pay for membership for all the aldermen?
No, just the city.
The city is just a member.
Now, if you, as a alderman, wanted to attend chamber functions, you'd be welcome. But it doesn't, they're all kinda pay-as-you-go items.
Okay, so, what was the rest of the far, you said?
Five hundred dollars is, uh, economic development payment, and six thousand dollars a year that. I think started when they had the economic development person, the county, Dwight County City Economic Development Person was in the chamber offices.
I think we should ask them, or I would ask for you to ask them, what are we getting for that five hundred dollars a month?
I was just gonna say, I think, I think she came last year, I think, if, needs to come and present a case as far as, again, I mean, certainly got new board members and what's happened over the last year?
I don't, I don't know what the chamber does proactively to spend money on, and, I mean, I don't know if they do more than answer the phone, or if they, or, you know, are in hot pursuit of things, but certainly nothing seems to happen.
Did Eric leave or is he the president?
Yeah, Eric, Eric Clapton, sitting behind the door. I don't mind, I don't mind supporting the chamber, but I would ask, are we getting the value that we should get out of it? And if we're getting a thousand dollars worth of value, I don't mind paying a thousand.
You know, we asked it last year, and, and the answer is not specific. It has to do with, the chamber is a recognized institution and business and industry, when they're considering a community, will often first go to the chamber because they know the name, and now, now, that's kind of broad and general.
If we're paying, if we're paying for that, what oversight do we have of our funds being spent?
It's just a grant, it's a favor.
Yeah, I know, but I guess my point is.
And we remember, so we have to.
Yeah, I, I surrender, but.
No, 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 I'm not.
It seems like we.
Don't surrender, I'm not supporting it, I'm just.
I know, but I mean, it's.
Talking about it.
I don't know, if somebody calls the chamber and the chamber person says, oh yeah, we'd love to have you, I mean, I don't know if they have in-depth knowledge, maybe they do, maybe they are, you know, really have a program, but, uh, I would like to maybe learn more about.
We will get them here.
I, I think in all fairness, we, we need to get them here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, nice to know where the, the rest of their funding comes from.
I, I think it's a due-supported organization. Some grants, from time to time, like the community developer. They raise money, they've got, you know.
County gives quite a bit of due.
A lot of the counties extend, probably the building and, I, I, I think they pick utilities and all that, building and utilities, I, I believe.
I don't mind supporting the chamber, I just would have liked our better understanding how it, how it functions when it comes to economic development.
Which they do quite a bit of advertising though, don't they? To which we do benefit from, I mean.
Sure, I, I would say we're probably doing most of it through.
Oh, you're saying still, still here today?
He's been dozing off a few times.
Alright, Dave.
Parkers.
Three or what?
You wanna, you wanna go through a little bit?
You wanna see kinda where we, all the things we've done, where we've.
What, mosquito chemicals, sixty-one oh one, we got twenty thousand dollars budget for that, I thought we made a decision not to finance that.
What page are we on?
What, what are we doing?
Twenty-four.
Sixty-one oh one.
It's twenty-three or twenty-four, one of, one of them.
I just put it in there in case you, somebody decided that they wanna do it again, you know? It's up to you guys.
What was it, David, what line item?
Sixty-one oh one. But that twenty, if you decide not to do it, I still need eight thousand in that line item for the biscuits.
They see you work pretty good, don't they?
Yeah.
Is there any concrete proof that the spraying works? I mean.
We're on TV. Uh, no, there's not, I mean.
Cause they passed my house the other day, and ten minutes after they went by, I was getting eaten up like crazy, and I wasn't before.
The chemical companies, they say it does.
They kill the mosquitoes they touch.
I think so.
Last year we voted to not buy any chemicals, this year we want to use up what we have. When will that, when will we be out of what we have?
We, we have, we should be able to finish up this year with what we have and what we're done with.
So, I mean, we can certainly revisit that as, as a new members on the board to make a decision, but the previous, the most recent decision was not to continue with that, but understanding Dave needs eight thousand dollars for static chemicals to, for grading grounds, right Dave?
Yes. Well, to answer your question, Mr. Prince, uh, town this size and Rivertown, we're, actually, we're supposed to be fogging at least twice a week. We're only fogging once, so, does it work? No, we're not doing it the way we're supposed to, but we just don't have the finances to do it, so, uh, I think we're wasting our time and money by, by fogging.
I mean, who says we're supposed to, I mean?
Well, I mean, the, the chemical companies and, you know.
If we're gonna do it, that's the recommendation.
The recommendation is like, so we should do it twice a week. Like City St. Louis, I think they might do theirs, you know, three, four times.
So.
I mean, if it, if we knew it was effective, it'd be one thing, but I'm.
So sixty-one oh one goes from twenty to eight, is that right?
Is that right?
David, that, if, if that happens, does that affect your sal, does that affect your wages that much?
Yeah, cause, uh, well, that's four hour, four hours of overtime every week for twenty-three weeks.
Four hours of overtime, a hundred and fifty dollars plus benefits.
No, not that much. Let's just roughly say a hundred dollars.
Hundred dollar, hundred.
Well, you're gonna figure.
Actual cost of the.
Yeah, a hundred, a hundred and probably twenty dollars.
So your overtime line could go down a little bit?
Well.
Well, you're over already, so maybe you go down to the five, right?
Yeah.
But how much of that was snow?
A lot, most of that was snow.
Yeah, okay.
So we're leaving it, forty-five dollars.
What's a telephone? Cell phones or what?
Telephone, that's for one in the shop and the one I have in my pocket that was making noise a while ago, apologize for that. Uh, it's part of the, the DSL two, the internet service.
And then the street lights, what, citizens?
Yeah.
And then dropping on down to streetlight maintenance?
Yeah, that, uh, a lot of that goes to Marzukos because, uh, citizens don't take care of the ones downtown. And, uh, we bought, we had bought quite a few, uh, the light heads and, uh, glass, and also the poles this year.
Have you ever checked into going composite posts?
Yes, and that was an absolute no from the. Yeah.
They rot out so bad, don't they?
I just do what I'm told, sir.
I mean, I think a composite would look almost identical.
Well, how are the eastern cedar posts versus the western cedar posts? We, we had, have we had any problems with the, since we've been going to the eastern?
Since we changed them over, that's only been the last couple of years, so it's, it's, uh, but the other ones, well, they've been there quite a few years, but they're, they're rotten, I mean, the bottoms, the seeds are out around, so, and, uh, termites ate a lot of them too.
Are we getting any, and I don't wanna put any ideas over it to you, but is any of it due to vandalism, or are we getting, do we get that many, or?
Few of them gets knocked over, you know, with, with vehicles and stuff, they run over, but, uh, some of them got to the point where, one, one year, we just barely push and they fall over, so, you know.
But his point is, is there any evidence of intentional vandalism?
No, no. I mean, they're, every little bit, yeah, somebody will throw something to them.
So, so we're, has this been, for streetlight maintenance, has this been a difficult year, an average year? I mean, it looks like you're gonna spend in the eight to nine thousand dollar range.
Yeah, uh, this year really hasn't been that bad, well, actually, I don't know if we got, we got, did we get the billing from Stanley yet? Do you remember?
Yes, you just got that.
Can you take that? How much?
Thirty-five hundred. And we just got to build for Fletcher right now, for streetlight supplies for the main streetlights too.
So you're gonna be right on budget this year?
It's like three thousand too.
And a lot of them, that's why we try to clean them out a couple of times a year, because the bugs get in, and when water sets in, it just holds water and burns up the ballast in them.
Can we go back up to sixty-two twenty and sixty-two twenty-one? Do you have higher anticipated costs for fifteen than what's actually been incurred in fourteen?
Uh, well, we still have, I figured with, uh, with the vehicles that we're gonna have, cause the way it sounds, you're not giving me any new vehicles, so I figured that, you know, we're gonna have probably about the same amount of expense in vehicles.
Well, but, but our point is that in sixty-two twenty vehicle repair and maintenance, we've only spent fifty-seven hundred this year. You projected fifteen thousand.
Oh, well.
And then with the equipment rental, it looks like we've not rented anything this year apparently, and that's, we got a six thousand dollar budget for next year.
Well, what that, what, what that is, is that duripatcher.
Oh, okay.
Cause the duripatcher wasn't in this past year, so.
Okay.
You're gonna adjust sixty-two twenty, Dave, or?
Yes, uh, I didn't, uh, must have overlooked that one.
Well, have you looked at your blades in preparing for this coming winter, I mean, do we have a lot of work due to the extra wear and damage we had last year?
I, I need to order some blades, we actually, uh, we were talking about that today, uh, kinda wanted to see how much money I had left in the budget, so, but I can take, take some, uh, out of here for sure. Uh, but I do have to, I'm gonna spend at least three thousand dollars on tires. Back goes, needs new tires and both trucks need new tires, so.
So if we made that ten instead of fifteen, and would that be reasonable?
Twelve.
Eleven five.
What are we gonna bid now? So we're going eleven, God, you're hard, Teddy.
You tried on that tire, Dave, the state bid?
Yeah, we, uh, we get state bid price through, uh, Mule.
About operating supplies tools, sixty-five, sixty. Just like last year, we spent fifteen thousand, this year doesn't look like, you know, something's coming pretty big in the last two months, are you gonna get, what are your general thoughts on that?
Well, I don't, we haven't got our, uh, our, uh, bill in for the paint and stuff we just bought, and that's kinda, I kinda let, see what I need at the end, so, but, I mean, we can knock it down, but like.
I'm, I'm not asking you to cut it, I'm just asking you, you know, what your thoughts are, I mean, if there's an opportunity to reduce it, yeah, but if you say no, I can't.
Well, it's not that I can't, it's just that, I mean, there's things that come up that I actually use out of that line item when I have to, because, I mean, that's what we buy, like I said, our paint, our paint brushes, and actually, we're gonna be going and replenishing all of our brushes and our sandpaper and all, cause since we make the poles and everything now, and our blades that come out for, that's all, so. We try to buy most of our stuff from Harbor Freight, uh, we don't buy the expensive stuff, but we're not a craftsman type of crew.
I wouldn't say that, I think the quality work that you guys do is, is.
Oh, no, I'm talking about the tools, not us.
You said the crafts, oh, tools, oh, I'm, I thought you were beating boy guys.
Oh, no, 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 heck, no. Oh, no, 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 heck no. Got a good crew.
I'm with you, I'm sorry. It's, uh, this meeting is starting to turn, you know.
Yeah, going past your best. Well, we're almost done here, so. Sad when we're gonna go.
Eight-thirty.
You wanna say danger?
Safety guy thing.
The, uh, uniform went up because we have to buy retro reflective shirts.
Okay, actually, Barton didn't mean to interrupt, but that's gonna go up to about forty-two hundred.
So you need from twenty-three hundred to forty-two? We're going the wrong direction.
I know, but.
Is that state law or what's up?
Just got, got the, oh, two bids in, so.
Why's it keep going up?
Well, because we're supposed to wear the retro reflective instead of the, the arms, the arms is not actually considered retro reflective anyway.
You could not do it. No, no, I'm, I'm happy to do it, I just wondered if they said we're supposed to, what's supposed to by who, so I'm.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, there's no federal regulation.
Wouldn't it be cheaper to go with regular uniforms with a vest over it? Than mesh vest?
It would be cheaper, but, but John, the stuff that we do, them vests will get hung on stuff, you know, I just think it's, it'd be safer not to have a vest hanging on me.
Class-two, uh, safety clothing is really a standard. You know, I think we're going overboard just by that. And the halftime, the guys, for first chance you get, you take that vest off. That's just the reality of it.
Yeah, they just don't fit tight enough and they're, they're, they hang on stuff.
I would like to give bolts to, to have hats on my guys.
Seventy-one hundred again, let's go there.
Now, Dave said that's probably gonna be more like forty-two, excuse me, forty-two hundred on a uniform.
Right, you got that. Dave, what's the difference, I'm, I'm sorry, Beth, go ahead.
I was just going back to seventy-one hundred again.
Oh, yeah.
What conferences you guys go to, Dave?
Uh, that's safety training, basically, it's, uh, that and then, well.
Chemicals?
The chemical spill, yeah, that's down below, that's on.
Chemicals.
Yeah.
But it's like a trip to Sykesville today, you know, one day, because MoDOT's got a training program.
How, how many people in your department, Dave?
Four.
Can you get by with five hundred on that instead of a thousand?
Well, it depends on how many safety, uh, seven dollars you want us to go to.
I'm looking at past years here too, you know.
Well, we, actually, we're, we've been going to more last year or so.
It's not like you're going to a conference where you got two or three guys going, spending the weekend at a conference, you're just travel time and, and, uh.
Yeah, we try, and we try to go, uh, pretty local, Sykesville, usually the furthest we go, and actually, we got one coming up, uh, next month, the chemical spill seminar. Which, uh, that, that's a hundred and twenty-five dollars per person, so.
Tell me you're going to that.
And we have to have four people.
Four, okay, okay.
Let's go back and maybe I missed something there, sixty-one oh five.
Okay.
For ten months, we spent seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and you want three thousand next year, up from twenty-five hundred this year. What is that? Stone, gravel, sand and mulch.
That is, uh, well, I used a lot of sand this year and I took it out, I, I thought I took it out here, maybe I didn't. And for, for gravel, whenever we dig up some and we, we put gravel in, compact it.
Did the gravel for the dura patcher come out of that too, or?
Uh, no, that was separate.
Separate.
We might've entered the sand in, in, in the oneies overall, the infrastructure.
You mulch the, uh, play areas of the parks once a year too, don't you?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Do you mulch the play area of the parks every year?
Uh, the park department does, it comes out of their budget, yeah, yeah, that comes out of their budget. That's under their trail budget or something.
Trails and landscaping. Pretty much zeroed that out this year.
Okay.
Put it all over here.
When the conferences, is that, comes up, it looks like all the departments had building and police.
That's the one I take the, uh, chemical spill out of.
No, seventy-one hundred I was back on, travel and lodging and conventions.
Yeah.
Can't we do like fundraisers or something? Looks like for all the different police and fire, comes up to like ten thousand dollars, couldn't we do a couple fundraisers rather than eliminate?
What kind of fundraisers are you gonna do to pay for city employees to get trained?
Huh?
What kind of fundraisers and who's gonna do them to get city employees to go to training?
We can have barbecues and.
Who's gonna work them?
Because some of those department heads could, along with us.
There you go.
I forgot how to barbecue, it's been so long.
It looks like Bloomsdale Fire Department, they have barbecue twice a year, the, you know.
I'm sorry, Tom.
Probably bodily important to go to them and there's gotta be some kind of fundraisers out there to, throughout the year, do several of them, to, to make ten thousand dollars, I would think.
Tell me what you want me to do, you want us to have a roadblock? We, we can do that.
There is different ways to go about it.
The city to have a roadblock to raise money for.
Hey, people get roadblocks for anything.
Oh, yeah, that's for sure.
What's special services?
Uh, special services, that's, that's our trash, and, uh, actually, we can knock that down because that also was.
That was your brush site cleanup also there?
The brush site cleanup we did once a year.
Seventy-sixty. We're gonna have that done again this year, or we doing that ourselves?
Uh, we're doing that ourselves.
So, we, we, do we need that?
How about, how low can we go, how much is our trash service? Well, how about the three thousand?
Go down to three, David?
Yeah.
Three?
We, uh, you know, a lot of times we have stuff like people throw, uh, couches and everything down at the brush site that we have to, uh, get rid of.
You take those out to.
Looking for nice couches.
David, we haul those out to, uh.
Well, if they don't fit in our dumpsters, you know, if they do though, but if not, we, we usually lay down a bunch of pallets and everything anyway, so.
So you take the stuff that doesn't belong there out to trash, trash dumpster station?
Yeah.
After the burning?
Oh, no, after, if, if our dumpsters are, are where we can throw our, that couch or whatever, icebox, whatever they throw down are in there, but if not, you know, then.
What do we hire a deck every year to haul out?
The brush site.
I know, but what, what, what are, is the stumps and the things that don't burn?
The stumps and, uh, the ashes and, and whatever else is left in there.
You're saying we don't need his services next year?
Not this year.
This next year?
No, not, okay, well, well, no, we won't need it.
Okay.
Whatever year that's gonna be.
So, so you need three thousand, so then, so we take that five thousand out?
Yeah.
And three thousand dollars to cover trash service, tipping fees if you have to take them to them.
Sign repair, David?
Sign repair?
Seventy-seventy-one.
Okay, reason why I went up a little bit on that, because signs went up since all the retro reflect, reflective signs, uh, quite a bit higher than the regular signs was.
Are we still making our own signs?
No, we have, we make the, the street name signs, but other than that, we haven't.
So this time, two years ago, there was a federal mandate that ordered you to, three years ago, maybe three years ago, that ordered you to convert all of your signs to these retro reflective signs. Then Obama kinda backed off on that and they pushed the date back. So, I don't think there's a federal mandate now for a completion date, but you gotta, as you replace them, you gotta buy the new stuff.
Right.
Is there something wrong, is there, is there a drop dead date now? Okay, there is a drop dead date. We don't know, we'll have to check on that.
I'll do further investigation for you, sir. See, you already cut my infrastructure improvement, uh, budget.
Well, we took everything out, all new capital expenditures out, so the question that we're kind of here to discuss is if we can find these kinds of savings we've been discussing tonight and sufficient quantity to create money from which we can draw for infrastructure improvements, what should we do? Now, you and I have discussed this.
Yes.
And you're prepared to talk about some options?
Well, I've got a list of, uh, I didn't make copies of that today because I didn't, didn't have enough time to just finish with the street analysis, but, uh, these are all the streets that are in really, really, really bad shape that needs to be, uh. Need to be redone completely.
Remove and replace.
Remove and replace.
Did you come up with a dollar in this?
No.
Trade with it?
No, really, it's just a. It's not in, uh, it's in alphabetical order, but, uh, you, uh, all were dead.
Just for sake of.
And they're, they're, and they're not prioritized either, right?
No.
The, uh.
Them are the ones that, and actually, if you, for the, some of the people that's been on since two thousand and six, that, there's quite a few of them that are still on the same list.
You can't do one of those.
You have a couple on there on the bottom, on there twice, the last three.
Oh, okay, wow.
Yeah, they're.
They're really bad.
I wish, okay.
Super, super.
They're really bad. Told you they was bad. But my suggestion would be that, what little money that looks like we're gonna have, would you say a hundred and?
I don't know, it goes a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, but.
Hundred ninety thousand?
We're gonna get there, but.
You look at any of them streets, it's gonna be hard to do, any of them streets, do them properly for a hundred and ninety thousand.
Any one.
Any one. And, you know, my suggestion would be to, uh, preserve the ones we have, like Market Street and Fourth Street, have a chip and seal, uh, a check with Missouri Patrol and to get a price that's between, uh, what was it, two fifty and three dollars a square yard for chip and seal.
Is there anybody except Missouri Patrol, since all the problems we've had with them over the years?
Well, uh, the reason why I went with them is because they're from St. Louis and it'd be higher, so we got a rough, you know, yeah, we could put it out for bids.
Yeah.
Local contractors do it.
Yeah.
It's just that they're reluctant to give price figures because.
Publicly, I understand.
Yeah, and so, he could get the figures.
I'm sorry to interrupt, two fifty, three dollars a foot?
Square yard.
Square yard.
Square yard. So, just roughly, uh, figuring out here what, uh, we do with that.
Dave, we, we wouldn't rule out the county. We wouldn't rule that out either, would we?
Well, I wouldn't rule that out at all, but the, uh, the county made it pretty clear that they didn't really wanna go under a lot of wires and stuff. And both of these streets have a lot of wires, you know, and I commend the county and stuff, but they're not used to, you know, they're, they're used to putting their beds up and going, you know.
So, I mean. What's three dollars a square yard work out to a per meter foot of an average, uh, Fourth Street or?
Well, I come up with, let me see, Fourth Street, it come up to, uh, sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Where to where?
That, that is from, uh, where state maintenance begins, no, well, no, uh, Market Street, I'm sorry, from Market Street all the way up to KSGM.
Two thousand, fifty, a hundred and?
Yeah, two thousand, twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and eight square yards.
And what's the price of fifty thousand for every two thousand feet?
Sixty-seven.
Fifty thousand or two thousand, that's seven dollars and fifty cents a foot.
Lineal foot.
But we have money in special roads for Fourth Street.
Well, I was gonna ask that.
We, we'll have forty-six thousand dollars at the end of this year in that fund. What is it, forty-six, forty, forty-eight?
Same as me, we lose years or something.
Forty-eight. Well, that's only, they made a payment last year, they make a payment this year, that's forty-eight thousand.
Same as me, it's been like three or four years with them, Jim, and we've got.
Only two years that they agreed to pay it.
But if we do Fourth Street, we could use that money some?
Whatever, whatever we wanna do on Fourth Street, we can use that money.
I think we need to preserve that because it's, it's cracking up also and the chip and seal that was on there quite a few years ago was put on real thin.
Yeah, that'd be a problem with that.
Well, it wasn't really a problem, it was just that we didn't have enough money and they was told to do with whatever they had to do with, so it really just put the rock on top of just a little skin wall and it didn't stick.
You mean we have to quit the job and it turned out to be bad, like everything else that, like the, everything else that's happening, I shouldn't say everything, like a lot of things that have happened in the past, where they went on the cheap side and now we're trying to figure out how to, how to fix the fix.
This last redo is holding up pretty good though, right?
Yeah, this, uh, what, what they did downtown, it's holding up real good.
I mean, there's no problems anywhere?
I haven't seen any yet. I think it still had a lot to do with cold weather.
Right.
And I, I do applaud those people for coming back and redoing it, I mean, they couldn't have been any nicer.
And actually, yesterday.
Their job to come back.
Well, I'm saying, they could've, but they, they, you, you weren't at the meeting when they showed up and the guy was apologetic over and over, the president jumped and he said, we dropped the ball on this, it's our fault, we'll be back down here and we're gonna take care of it.
I thought they kinda went beyond, I mean, if you look at downtown, they could've came back and patched the areas and said, hey, this is our patch, see you later.
I have nothing to say about those people.
We got extra two years out of that, we had a whole, I, I thought. Yeah, on the chip and seal, you know, John, Tenth Street, isn't that chip and seal holding up pretty good, cause I know on, in outer screen.
Oh, really?
Yeah, there's, there's some cracks. But that was chip and seal, that wasn't like. That was chip and seal with, uh, what's it, what's it?
Hard mountain chat.
No, nobody see the backup.
Where else, Dave? Well, Market Street, roughly figured that was, uh, seventeen thousand, five hundred square yards and, so, I mean, at, it's, at two ninety-five, I just, because they said between two and three, just roughly, but, uh, fifty-one thousand, so. But that, since we don't have that much money, if we have this available to preserve them streets, because, well, if we only have enough to do one street, which I doubt that would even do any streets.
So you just calculated, out of the cuts that we did tonight, we say fifty-seven thousand dollars out of the budget, we spent all of that for roads. And you have a CD that's fifty-six thousand dollars, if you wanted to cash in any of the CD, you'd have a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars for the chip and seal, let's say we're gonna do that. At seven dollars a lineal foot, that would give you fourteen thousand feet approximately, uh, chip and seal that you could do. I don't know, it doesn't sound like it's gonna do Market Street.
What if you threw the, I mean, if you decide to throw the forty-eight in there for Special Road? On a street like Market Street where you got a lot of concrete patches, can you go over that one?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
If you throw the forty-eight, then we get enough to do.
If you threw the forty-eight for Special Road, you could be involved, wouldn't you?
Yeah, you get another seven thousand feet. Forty-eight thousand.
Didn't say the county didn't like the power lines?
They, yeah, they, they're not too crazy about the power lines.
Seven thousand dollars. Do they have power lines in the county?
Well, not as many as we got in the city. More houses in the city. I mean, I'm not saying they won't do it, but I know they, they, uh, had reservations about it, so.
I think on chip and seal labor is, you know, not a big cost, cause they get it done so quickly and such a small amount of equipment.
We, John, we, we won't let, I mean, we'll certainly have that discussion.
And then some of these streets would be taken off, wouldn't they, off this list?
Well, you do have.
Didn't they say some of them is gonna be on screwed point base deal?
Point base and Parkwood from Point Base to sixty-one, we can cover out of the tip.
But I was just kinda letting you know the more streets in the-
I mean, because that, you know, people's thinking we're only gonna do a couple streets, whatever would come out of that point base deal.
Yeah, it will, yeah, you would certainly be doing, I thought it would look like, we would, we would be doing some major improvements on streets. Now, you're, you got the six thousand dollars in there for the dura-patcher. You got the materials in here for the dura-patcher?
No, that was coming next.
Oh, okay.
Then I need twenty-five thousand for that. That's roughly what we spent for the whole month for the material and, uh, the oil.
All right, so cut that fifty-seven thousand down to- What happened to the recycled rock?
It didn't, it wasn't clean enough. It was too dirty. Yeah, it just, it had too much dirt in it. Dirt and oil doesn't, doesn't mix very good. Down to brush site. Kinda tried filling some low spots and-
It's hard to drive in, too.
It's hard to drive on?
Yeah, yeah, dump site. The stuff doesn't compact real well when there's that dirt in there, whether it does.
Well, then we either need to find some more money to do his suggestions or, or cut, cut back on what he did. I think the, I think the dura-seal, I think that worked well, I 'm gonna buy agree, and it certainly will, will help some of these streets last longer, especially these ones we can't get to. Uh, so I, I think that's twenty-five thousand, that would be well spent, I guess. Did the county or whatever decide if they were gonna buy that, or?
Last conversation I had with the county was that they weren't inclined to buy one unless they could control the oil. So, and they didn't have any expectation to build the oil storage facility there. But as they had, as long as they had been on somebody else, it was gonna be an annual decision they had to make.
Well, we might have some money left out of chemicals, because the way it sounds, we're not gonna be able to find any salt.
Don't laugh.
Well, I mean, that's, that's, that's not-
Yeah, no, we're not good, serious. Our supplier called and said that, uh, as of now, they, they have no way of finding any. Said they're still looking, but he said, "If you can find some somewhere else." So I called Guthers and they said they're gonna get some in, but they doubt if they have any extra for us.
An article in the Post Dispatch a couple of weeks about that.
And they, they told me also that, uh, most, most times it was nine, uh, Trump needs bid on state bids, there was only two this year.
So you got some salt?
I have about seventy-five tons right now, so that'll, that's a, about two decent snow.
Now, we need looking to worry in the screenings of something.
I don't think screenings would work. I honestly would think that once that melts, it would, uh, it would make it slick, slicker than what it is. And then next thing you gotta look at, John, is if you, if you do that, where's it gonna go? It's gonna go in the storm drains.
I know. Beats nothing.
Yeah, but what's it gonna cost us when we have to have them storm drains cleaned? I mean, that's kinda looking at it like that, too, you know. I, I honestly, God, don't think screenings will work. It might work in a county, but I don't think it's working in the city.
They used it years ago here.
How many years ago? I've been here thirty.
I've lived here on the line.
Well, I mean, so live, but I mean, I've, I've been here thirty, they always, they always used to use senders, but not screenings, as long as I've been here.
I believe it did, if you talked to somebody.
All right, are we about done?
Yeah. For tonight, uh, can you meet next Wednesday? You can't be here Thursday. Uh, we'll meet there.
Wednesday at six or seven? What day did we decide on?
We haven't. How about Monday?
Good, it works for me.
Monday's obvious. Tuesday?
Tuesday. How's everybody doing Tuesday?
I'll be missing seven ninety-eight. That's all right. Priorities.
Tuesday.
Six? Uh, the municipal hall in Farthingham.
So I'd like to thank the department for having me available, post this decision.
All right, we'll have some, uh, I'll ask, um, Chamber, if they can attend.
Oh, is, uh, Sandra gonna be back?
Bob and I, we're gonna, let's talk, let's conference follow with Sandra and-
I don't need, I don't necessarily need the chamber to show up while we're in the budgeting process.
No.
This explains-
Just, and, and eating up our time to try to get this budget done, but after, afterwards, I'd like to have a better understanding. I'm not complaining about spending the money. I would just like to have a better understanding of, of their processes, uh, on economic development. So to eat up our time, uh, on a weeknight while we're trying to get this budget hammered out, I'd rather have, uh, just budget for everybody else.
I agree with Tom. Just have him, we can come in later and, later-
I'm not, I'm not raising hell over the chamber, I just like to have a better understanding.
Channel seven and ninety-eight TV and web broadcasting are made possible through contributions and donations from viewers like you. Thank you for your support.